Okay, welcome. Welcome to the Deschutes County Board of Commissioners meeting for nine AM Wednesday, April twenty-six, two thousand and twenty-three. First item on the agenda is Pledge of Allegiance. Please join me.
Allegiance to comply in states and to the republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, infinite.
Next item on the agenda is Citizen Input. Is there anyone in the room? I don't see any blue pages. And might there be somebody online? I guess it looks like we're still. Okay, so seeing none for today. Uh, next item is Consent Agenda. Couple sets of minutes and thank you, let her in.
Um, some of the consent agenda.
A more in-depth letter.
You want to pull it or do you, is that those your comments? Okay, well, let's pull it. Yeah, that's fine. So item number two, we'll pull for further discussion. Uh, and you support that, Commissioner? Okay, so that's been moved and seconded for three of the items. Uh, any other discussion? Seeing then Commissioner Dare.
Yes.
Commissioner Chang?
Yes.
And Chair votes yes. So item number two, uh, letter of thanks to Kyle Gorman for service on the Deschutes Cannabis Advisory Panel. Please proceed.
Basically just what I said, I'd like us to write a more in-depth letter thanking Kyle more broadly for his service to the community. Working at the Oregon Water Resources Department and, and leading efforts within the Deschutes Basin to try to make sure that there was water for, for everyone and all users.
So, uh, the current content of the letter plus probably new paragraph, couple more sentences.
Yeah, I mean, and, and maybe the, um, yeah, I, I, I'm not sure if we might want to put the Cannabis Advisory Panel thanks even at the bottom of a, of a letter that's more focused on his, his, his bigger, bigger contributions.
So, uh, you want to make a motion to approve a letter including other statements?
Uh, I move, uh, approval of a letter thanking Kyle Gorman for his service broadly to the community, including on the Deschutes County Cannabis Advisory Panel.
I would second that.
All right. Uh, any other discussion? Seeing then Commissioner Chang?
Yes.
Commissioner Dare and Chair votes yes. So we'll add some content to that and thank him for his service.
Well, and I would love to, um, to say something about, uh, Chad Santola who's serving and our Director of our Solid Waste. I know he's closer to his retirement, but I had asked him yesterday, what is the cost of fire free? Cause when I, um, suggested that idea in two thousand and twenty, uh, the pushback was it was going to cost the county half a million. And I said, what does one fire cost to Deschutes County? So anyway, uh, the contract we just approved in consent is for four hundred and twenty-five thousand for one year, but Chad's going to get back to us after fire free and see, um, what actually does fire free cost us. So thank you for being so incredibly responsive and so appreciative that you're serving Deschutes County and have been for quite a while.
Thank you. Item number five, Second Reading of Ordinance for, uh, Plan Amendment and Zone Change.
Good morning, Commissioners. For the record, my name's Audrey Stewart and I'm an Associate Planner with the Community Development Department. The item before us today is the Second Reading of Ordinance two zero two three zero zero seven, which is approving the Markin Plan Amendment and Zone Change. This was a request to rezone and change the comprehensive plan designation for a property that's approximately fifty-nine acres located just east of Bend. The board held a public hearing on January eighteenth, and then the board held deliberations on March first of this year. At those March first deliberations, the board voted unanimously to approve this application. I came before you two weeks ago for the first reading of this ordinance, including all the attached exhibits, including those board findings. Um, I didn't receive any edits from the board and so I'm before you again today with the second reading. I'm available if you have any questions. Otherwise, staff would entertain a motion to adopt this ordinance.
Thank you, Audrey.
Yes, thank you for joining us.
Any discussion or a motion?
I'm moving an approval of a second reading of ordinance number twenty twenty-three dash zero zero seven by title only.
Thank you.
Second.
Any other discussion? Uh, seeing then Commissioner Dare?
Yes.
Commissioner Chang?
Yes.
And Chair votes yes. So this is Second Reading by Title Only of Ordinance number twenty twenty-two, uh, twenty twenty-three dash zero zero seven, an ordinance amending Deschutes County Code Title Twenty-three, the Deschutes County Comprehensive Plan to change the Comprehensive Plan Map Designation for Certain Property From Agriculture to Rural Residential Exception Area and amending Deschutes County Code Title Eighteen, the Deschutes County Zoning Map to change the zone designation for certain property from exclusive farm use to multiple-use agriculture. Uh, a motion for adoption also would be the next step.
Move adoption of ordinance number twenty twenty-three dash zero zero seven.
A second.
Any other discussion? Seeing then Commissioner Chang?
Yes.
And Commissioner Dare?
Yes.
And Chair votes yes. Thank you very not, very much. Been a long process.
Following on the tail end of this, can I just check in with Will on, uh, how our, how our discussions of overlays and urban area reserves are going?
Good morning, Commissioners. You're Planning Manager, Walgroves. Um, you had some questions about that, uh, interface with the City of Ben. We met with them last Thursday. Uh, confirmed some of the points that I had speculated about that at this time, it doesn't appear that they are looking to preserve or, uh, uh, pursue urban reserves. And the extent that they move forward, it would be directly at the urban growth boundary, at least tactically where they're at now. Uh, they understood and shared our concerns about orderly development in areas that might be urbanized and some of the ideas that we discussed, um, and some variants of them were brought up. It's my understanding that the ball is effectively in the city's court to come back to us and let us know potentially as part of our work plan uh, and the board's hearings associated with those, what sort of, uh, action that they would like to see coordinated. Um, there were a variety of options with kind of different levels of interaction and uh, various effectiveness in terms of improving formatting for future urbanization. And so, uh, they're going to talk internally and come back to us with that, uh, proposal.
And, and what might some of those a- actions or options for our work plan look like?
I think the, if in terms of, uh, landowner burden, so that I'm going to rank them by how much they limit the development potential in order to potentially, uh, improve uh, future urbanization options. I think probably the lowest, the lowest option would be to apply a requirement that, or to preclude future plan amendment zone changes. So those properties that go through plan amendments, zone changes in the future from dividing in any form other than cluster so that they would have to leave, you know, uh, sixty-five percent of their parcel in open space. But because they're adjacent to the city, they would also be eligible for either a, uh, double or a time and a half density bonus. So, you know, the, although the clustering comes with some burden in terms of open space, it also increases the total number of units that would be produced. Again, you know, this is only activated at such time as that the landowner attempts to divide under county rules as opposed to, you know, if they get brought into the city, obviously it would be fully urbanized. Now pivot on that, that would be more restrictive would be to apply those to not just future such rezonings, but to apply it to, uh, maybe some, some horizon of recent rezonings to say that those properties, uh, you know, would be subject to, to this restriction in the future or would be, they would, the ones currently rezoned would be subject to this restriction. Uh, even broader one would be to ask the City of Bend, you know, what directions do you anticipate in expanding? And those restrictions are put on all divisible properties in that direction to try and, uh, improve that coordination. You know, certainly each of them come with, you know, additional asks of landowners and potential benefits for future urbanization. And so it'll be interesting to see what the, uh, what the city requests. And then to the extent that the board agrees to entertain a process to evaluate that, you know, that's, uh, that would be a legislative process that would presumably go through the Planning Commission. That can be implemented either by an overlay zone or simply changes to the text of the relevant chapters in terms of when these types of land divisions were allowed. So, um, yeah, just waiting to see what the, the city comes back with this proposal. There may be other ideas as well, but those are the ones that have been kicked around to date.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
For the update. Yeah. So, uh, uh, we know that urban reserve is a very valuable thing and, and land use. It really does give people clarity and, uh, you know, what direction and what possibilities are going to be out there, kind of pre-planning for, for growth, which is part of the state land use system.
Yeah. And one other update, and this is, uh, you know, something I've heard there have been discussions about. So there's a specific problem that has come out of the urban reserve and urban growth boundary system. You know, when we did this update for Redmond, they basically, they took a fifty-year urban reserve and immediately ate twenty of it for the urban growth boundary, leaving a thirty-year reserve, which is a nice planning process that, you know, is a good payoff for the level of effort engaged. Under the current understanding of the rule system, if you did an urban reserve first, you could only do thirty years. And then if you came in for an urban growth boundary, you would immediately eat twenty of it, leaving only a ten-year reserve. And so I know there have been some discussions at the state level about, uh, restoring the, or making official and clear the Redmond process as, as an option, at which point urban reserve planning becomes more attractive. Um, I don't think there's anything currently at the legislature about that, but I know those discussions are happening.
Great. It's helpful to understand. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
So next item is courthouse progress update. Uh, Lee Randall and a team. Thank you very much for joining us.
Okay, um, Mr. Chairman, our live stream is down at the moment, um, and given the uh, significance of this topic, perhaps we can wait just a moment to see if we can bring it back online.
Yep. So we'll stand by. Yeah. Interesting topic for everybody to be able to hear. So we'll stand by for either resetting or connecting to live stream.
Did you see the pictures of the, uh, car that hit courthouse on the news today?
Yeah.
I go like that one beam looked like it was a little bent.
Sounds like it was quite an event.
Yeah, seventy miles an hour down Bond Street. Okay.
Thumbs up.
Okay.
It's a short pause.
So the, uh, yeah, this is item number, uh, fi- uh, six, our courthouse progress update.
Thank you. Good morning, Commissioners. Lee Randall, uh, Facilities Director. Like to begin with, uh, introductions of our folks that we have joining us online. Coming group, our owner's rep, we have Wayne Powderly and Jerry Mulrooney.
Good morning.
Hello. And then we have, uh, from the Circuit Court, uh, Trial Court Administrator Angie Curtis. And, uh, Presiding Judge Wells Aspie may be able to join us, uh, but we'll, we'll see if, if that's possible. He may be joining us. Here today, I'll, I'll let the rest of the team introduce themselves.
Uh, Mike Gorman, LRS Architects.
Uh, John Williamson with Pence Contractors.
Morning.
So going to our presentation, we'll start, uh, I'll start with a brief introduction and then I'll, uh, hand things over to Wayne Powderly with the coming group. Um, and then each of us will have part of the, uh, update for you. So beginning, uh, in the fall of two thousand and twenty-one, Deschutes County began assembling a project team to expand the Deschutes County Courthouse, uh, based on concepts that were developed, uh, back in two thousand and four. Um, with input from the county's Facility Project Review Committee, um, a team was assembled, uh, in early two thousand and twenty-two, uh, which included coming group as the county's owner's reps, LRS Architects and Pence Construction. Uh, the team began in June of two thousand and twenty-two with programming, uh, which included stakeholder engagement tours, uh, mini meetings, uh, design charrettes. And out of that process, uh, we developed, uh, some principles that we wanted to carry through the whole project that we could revisit at each stage and make sure we're staying, uh, true to. And those included security, user experience, functionality, maintenance, design, wellness, and additional area. These were just items that we wanted to bear in mind as the process moved forward. At this point, we've, uh, we are up through and have completed schematic design. The last time we spoke with the board, we mentioned that we would be back with an update at this point, um, after a budget estimate. And with that, I will, uh, turn, uh, the presentation over to Wayne Powderly with coming group.
Thank you, Lee. Good morning, Commissioners. Thank you for your time. Uh, we, sorry, leave you go to the next slide. Thank you. Uh, so we'll just touch on, uh, these agenda items here. Uh, we'll talk about project progress since last update. Uh, we, Mike from LRS will talk a little bit about the schematic design plans where we sit today. They give you guys an update on the budget update and the process of how we got to where we're at today. And then next steps over the next few months to the completion of the construction, uh, documents. And then I'll open it up for questions and discussions. So since last time we met with, uh, the B O C C, we have, um, in, done a lot of progress in January, February, uh, we actually had over twenty-one or twenty-one stakeholder groups, uh, presentations to each one of those groups that are involved or associated with the courthouse. Uh, we got some excellent feedback and comments back from a lot of those groups, which we have now incorporated into the design. Uh, also in March, we were able to complete the traffic analysis and that will be, uh, part of the planning supplemental that LRS will be submitting to the City of Bend here very shortly. Um, also in March, as I mentioned, we had skema- uh, co- sorry, concluded the schematic design. And then we were able to use that packet and issued that to two separate companies, uh, estimating groups, uh, to do two separate budget checks, um, which we'll talk about here in just a little bit. And current design, just to let you guys know, current design overall of the new build on the south end of the courthouse, uh, currently sits at fifty-two thousand square feet. So I'll hand it over to Mike Gorman, talk a little bit about where the plans are today.
So where we're at today is in terms of the schematic design, here's the basement level. The basement level includes, uh, secure parking for the judges. It also includes a new Sally Port, uh, for in custody to be brought in, um, and also an in custody holding area, um, down there. Now, what's key in this whole design of this new courthouse addition is that there's three major circulation paths in the project. You've got the public circulation, you've got the staff circulation, basically judges and in custody. And you really don't want the three of those to cross it all. So it, it has a big impact because it does add more square footage to the building. So from the basement level, we do have a, a elevator that goes all the way up to all floors. That's basically for the staff and the judges. So they don't cross paths with the public. We also have an in custody elevator that goes from the in custody holding area in the basement, takes it up through the first floor, does stop there so they can take people, uh, in custody to other courtrooms. And then it goes up between the courtrooms so that now, uh, they come up between two courtrooms. There's a little holding cell there. They can be taking from there into the courtroom and not have to cross the public path. This is kind of a higher level of security than we currently have in the existing courthouse. It was one of those decisions made back then that was a challenge and it was kind of went forth there. Then of course you got the public circulation. Um, so, um, so that's kind of what's going on in the basement. Um, on the first floor, what's something that we had a challenge with is that we decided to lower the entrance lobby, security lobby down to grade. So now when you come in, you don't have to go up steps. You're coming in through security. There's a bigger holding area. So in other words, you can have a lot of people stacked and they're out of the weather or they're undercover, uh, because there's that key times where beginning of the morning, right after lunch or whatever else that you have people standing out in the weather. Um, and it's just not enough holding area for the security. So it's something we worked pretty detailed with the Sheriff's Office to work out how to make that lobby more secure. Once you come in that area, there's a ramp that comes up to the main level or you have the elevator or you have the stairs. You have three different ways to get up to the main level, which is the same floor that the courtrooms are on the first floor right now. Um, on that level, besides the existing courtrooms, we've got the new clerks area and the clerk's, um, area that interacts with the public, um, trying to get that more open, um, environment as well as, um, a, a nice environment for the clerks to work in, that area, the support area, a lot more windows, just a more light and bright area, a place for people to work. Like I said, those elevators still come up through. The staff can use that private elevator or, you know, non-public elevator to go up and down if it needed to be. And, and custody still stays separated and stuff. Then on the third floor, we have our two courtrooms. Now, second floor, excuse me, second floor, we have the two new courtrooms. We have the large courtroom. We have the smaller courtroom. The smaller courtroom is on the down page. Um, and it's just more, everything's the same size except for the number of people that can in, can be in the, uh, viewing area of the courtroom. Um, and we have kind of the back of the house where the judges would be, where support would be as well as where the jury assembly would be. And that's all non-public area. We're also increasing the number of restrooms, um, in the facility because right now it doesn't have enough restrooms. Uh, so we're improving that. We're creating a lobby area outside of the courtrooms to add a little more room there. So for the gathering before the courts start. Um, and then of course you got your vertical circulation. Uh, we're proposing two new vertical cert- elevators going up and down. We're probably only going to put in one for right now until the third floor becomes actually a viable space. That kind of becomes the hub to go into the existing courthouse and to the, and, and the new courthouse. And of course, the third floor is just a, what we call a warm shell. Um, it's basically nothing's in it. It's basically you got the outside walls. Um, you can kind of see you got the elevators coming up through it. You have the stairs. And so that space can be utilized many different ways in the future till it actually needs to be courtrooms and stuff. So it's set up. Um, and actually all three floors are set up to basically have courtrooms in it. Trying to plan that out, kind of create that, uh, flexibility for the future, not knowing what's going on and stuff like that. Um, we, we did tighten the building down. The programming did come through about sixty-six thousand square feet of needs. Um, and we're basically got it toned down about fifty-two. Not everybody's getting everything they want. Um, but it gets us down the road a little further. If anyone has any questions on that.
So what does it look like to, to not put in an elevator? As in, there's probably the infrastructure, the shaft, the structure around it.
Everything is going in except for the elevator itself. And so the elevator itself runs about eighty grand, a hundred grand, somewhere in that ballpark.
Forty thousand per level currently in today's market.
So, um, we get the third floor, you definitely would need the two elevators. Uh, but one, I mean, it's one of those ones. If the budget's coming good, I think we go ahead and put it in. It's going to be an ad alternate.
Okay.
So in other words, would still be there, but it's a, it's an add if, if the budget allows when we bid.
But I mean, it'll still be very much ready for that elevator too, though, right? I mean.
Yes, we want to make it as simple as easy to, to add.
Yeah, you, the, the shaft is there. Their electrical infrastructure is there. It's just fitting out the cab at some point in time down the road.
Um, back to the traffic analysis. Can you span on that a little bit? Uh, you know, traffic for the area, the surge in, in, you know, vehicles for, for, uh, uh, jury trials or jury pool, you know, uh, so how, well, how big of a footprint and what does that look like today? Uh, any notes came out of traffic analysis?
Yeah, um, I think, uh, for the most part, it's, it's fairly technical in regard to making sure that the proposed building, um, has access to the street per code. Um, so in terms of volume, uh, and visits, there's an analysis that's, uh, part of that, that just establishes that the surrounding streets can, um, support, uh, the added building. And it's part of, um, the technical requirements for our planning application. Um, Mike, would you have anything to add to that? There were no real, um, I don't think real either enlightening pieces of information or surprises, uh, that came out of the traffic analysis. Um, it, I think demonstrated that we, uh, meet code requirements and that, um, and that will also beyond that, that things will function, um, as we would want them to for the courthouse in that area.
Great, thank you.
So what are the questions about the basement, the parking? Since you've made the building fourteen thousand square feet less than what we originally looking at, we're at down at fifty-two thousand. Did you make that parking area any smaller?
It did shrink down as well. It's the whole building.
How many spa- okay, how many spaces did we lose then? Is it still going to be?
We're sitting at fourteen in the secure. Yeah, we were like, I think we started out at eighteen.
Right.
Yeah. So we did lose a couple, yes. So one thing I'd also bring up, um, obviously with, uh, Sunday night's little, uh, car flying through the air. So one of the things that we're also proposing, and we've had discussions with the City of Ben, is we are taking the curb on Bond Street and moving out and deleting the parking and directly in front of the courthouse. So basically from Bond down to the two thousand and three addition, we'll bring in that curb out to basically the, you know, the street line. We're also putting in, um, might have to look at maybe making taller after seeing this vehicle fly through the air like it did. Uh, but we basically have these concrete blocks, a lot of return and some, uh, bollards and stuff to hopefully stop exactly that type of thing happening. So we met with Homeland Security. They kind of walked around and, and brought up different issues. And of course, you know, in perfect world, the courthouse is way back and you've got a hundred feet around the building for any vehicles and stuff. I mean, that's the perfect world, but obviously we don't have that scenario. So by doing that on the front, it, uh, also protects security, um, you know, the type of thing. We're also, you know, having our bulletproof glass in cer- certain areas so that, you know, and security's there. Someone can't come take a shot at them, stuff like that, creating that protection area. Um, along Greenwood, we do have a little separation. We, we shrunk the building and actually moved back from the property line a few more feet. So now we have a little bit broader area from Greenwood over as well as when they do the Greenwood improvements. The curb is actually going to get moved out further as it is from right now. So that creates a bigger separation. We've talked to the city, uh, about the bus location, um, either moving it, we're going to even move it west one street or back one street, um, because that's another one of the things that Homeland Security brought up. And the same on Harriman, we're going to basically make that no parking on just in the back part of the new. So there's no parking there where the in custody, where the sheriffs are bringing in custody and for the Sally Port and where the judges have been going to secure parking lots. We're trying to keep that security thing, try to improve it.
Not driving around that one or two vehicle that tries to park right there on the road. Yeah.
And, and I will add, these are very preliminary discussions with the city. So, um, our planning application hasn't gone in. Um, these are ideas that we're, we're talking about that we think would benefit the courthouse uh, and the downtown. And so in terms of acceptance and approval, um, I, we don't want to suggest that, that those, um, proposals have been accepted by the city at this point. Um, but they're items that, uh, we think are important for the overall function of the, of the courthouse in the downtown. And we'll continue to have those discussions with the city as we go through the planning and process.
Great.
Um, then one question that I had was about, uh, about the third floor shelled out space. So that is set up to be able to convert to courtrooms at some point in the future.
Correct. They can be two courtrooms or it can obviously be a big open office area or, you know, divided up to however you kind of want it. But yeah, the general ten, it was set up for two courtrooms so that you had four, what we call twenty-first century security courtrooms compared to in terms of in custody, getting to the courtrooms and how the judges and everything to it.
Yeah, um, so, but thinking about a, a more incremental future, um, if we, uh, are, are given one, one new judge by the state, you know, in a, in a certain timeframe, is it, does it make sense to, to build one courtroom on the, on the third floor and leave the remainder of the, of the space flex space? Or is it really better to do it two at a time?
Um, I think there's three different, uh, topics that that touches on and, and we can hit all three. One would be from the court's perspective and we have TCA Angie Curtis here who could comment on One would be from the court's perspective, and we have TCA Angie Curtis here who could comment on court function and, and how it would work with an additional judge, um, to courtrooms built out. And then um, with John can speak to uh the construction aspect of it and, and cost. Um, the, and then based on the current design, one thing that, that we have included for each courtroom floor um, is three judges' chambers per every two courtrooms. And so that was intentional so that as the uh court grows, um, likely there will be a tipping point at which um, there are enough different types of, of um items on the docket uh and hearings underway that um, not every judge would need to be in a courtroom on every day. And so that's sort of an efficiency move, but I would uh first defer to TCA uh Curtis, if she's available, if she has anything to add.
Thank you. I would just add that we could certainly make use of a third courtroom if it was finished out. And we can be flexible with how we would do that. Another alternative might be to complete a courtroom that doesn't initially include a jury box, for example, because we do have certain types of proceedings that don't require a jury. So I think there are several opportunities to do incremental build out if that was cost effective and met the needs of the court.
Then I think from a construction standpoint, John, if you have anything.
Yeah, building one at a time on that third floor is certainly possible, but there is an inefficiency associated with that. So when you do go to build out that additional courtroom, you're going to be paying a premium. And that percentage is going to vary depending on a lot of things. But if you're going to a night shift and or have reduced productions, you can be anywhere from twenty to almost twenty percent to a hundred percent, almost double the cost to build it in a, in a sec- secondary phase. I would, I would estimate.
I'm just, I'm just picturing that uh with this uh shelled out third floor for however long uh it's in that state, um, we are going to uh, there's going to be people using it, uh, you know, groups of various kinds. Um, and uh, the, the, you know, uh, wh- when, when we reach a point where the state is ready to give us one new judge and there's a whole lot of people who are, who are making active current use of that third floor, um. Putting in two courtrooms when one is going to be empty and displacing all of the people who are using out the shell third floors. You know, uh, may not be a very popular decision.
I will mention that at this point, um, we'll, we'll talk about the budget here in a minute. But um, the current budget in uh allows for what we're calling a warm shell, which really isn't um, designed to be occupied at this point. So um, if we were to create a space there for say, open office space, uh, where it could be uh divided off from the lobby um, and then um, and set up with cubicles for whatever group may be available um, for that would, or what group would have that need. Um, that would be in addition to what we're currently budgeted. Um, so currently what we show, for example, um, the public elevators. Um, there would be an override so that they don't go to the third floor currently. Um, and uh, as well as probably some controls on the other elevators as well. So we really are currently within the budget showing it as um, a shelled space that um, for instance, would have uh, freeze protection, frost protection, but wouldn't be fully ventilated. Um, wouldn't have uh full power. There would be um panels for future power, um, but it wouldn't be set up currently to, to be occupied. Okay.
Blank slate for tenant improvements.
Correct. It'll be set up and ready, ready to go for the future.
I mean, I'm sure there's going to be demand for this space. So the question of who's going to pay to, to get it the, the remainder of the way to be functional cubicle spacer or otherwise.
And uh, this is the current rendering of what the uh the addition looks like. Um, it, it's basically, we're looking for a darker color down below and lighter color up above. Um, it's kind of a mixture, you know, budget wise is controlling some things in terms of we have kind of concrete um, for the, for the basement area, and then we have some kind of uh a, a brick kind of above that. Um, and then we have a rain screen up above and the rain screen is basically a, a stone product that has a fifty-year um, life in it, um, that uh works really well. You know, the questions come up in terms of how did we kind of come up with this look and everything else? And, and we kind of took it off of what downtown looks like. And if you look at downtown, you have property, you know, these properties down there are twenty-five foot wide or fifty foot wide or seventy-five. If you look, it's just, they're all different all the way down. And when we looked at this, um, as trying to come up with, how do you take the nineteen seventy-seven original building? How do you take the twenty, the two thousand and three edition? And how do you do this? And how do you take the original courthouse? How do you try to make this thing kind of look or, or feel or come together and stuff? And so our option that we came up with was with basically this is, is, it is distinctly different. You've got the two thousand and three that stands out. You have the new entrance, which kind of stands out differently as well. And then you have the corner building, because obviously it's a very prominent corner in downtown being on Bond and Greenwood. Um, so it is kind of a, a, a stone product. Like I said, it's got the long life. Um, and we kind of feel, you know, that it kind of blends in well and, but at the same time, it, it, it does have some significance in terms of what it is. This is the county courthouse. This is a, an important building. And so we wanted to also have that unique um, ability with it as well.
So you're saying it's a stone product?
It's a stone product, yes.
It's not a real stone?
It, but basically it is a, a real stone product, yes.
But you're saying it only has a fifty-year life?
Um, that's what the manufacturer warranty is on is fifty years.
You mean it'll keep the color for fifty years?
Should, yes.
Okay, because I'm thinking about like Italy and the buildings there that decades and there's stone building.
Right, they should be, yeah, but that's what the warranty is on and stuff. Yeah, and it's a long-term product and it has to be cleaned. It still has to be have some ma- maintenance on it and stuff. But we're trying to put a product that is low maintenance, which was one of our seven guiding principles, which was maintenance. So you know, it has a plus and minus because it is a little bit more an expensive product. And so we tried to be very cautious of where we're using it and not use it if we don't need to use it in certain areas.
So how often do you have to clean it then? Every ten years or something?
I would probably say every ten years. They're going to be up there with the power washer cleaning it and, and doing any minor repairs that might have happened or something, yeah.
And, and to provide some context, as we look at building envelopes, um, we'll generally look at twenty-year, thirty-year and fifty-year. And uh, fifty years really considered um, the top of the line um, for a public building of, of this type. Um, it's just kind of the categories that are, that are used uh within the industry. So it does represent a, um, a very long-term product for the building.
The original building in seventy-seven and, and the two thousand and three, they're both brick. You know, in theory, those need to basically be cleaned about every ten years and actually resealed every ten years as well, because brick is porous. And so undergoing maintenance, no matter what you do, but you try to limit that.
So it's really good for longer than fifty years.
Right, yes.
So my thought is uh, is the idea to kind of match the, the uh tone and, and color of the original nineteen forties courthouse. I mean, were they, were they kind of look the same? Color and tone is what I'm thinking that, and they obviously look different structurally.
Yeah, we kind of, but you know, the original courthouse is kind of more of that grayish. And we kind of wanted to, you know, be in a prominent corner and stuff, kind of wanted to add a little bit more significance to it. So uh, it was kind of what the design team um kind of came up with in discussions with the uh user groups and stuff like that. So it was kind of a combination of all of it.
Um, I do think it can be seen as a nod to the nineteen forties courthouse um, on the opposite end, kind of a bookend. Um, uh, in the same way that the nineteen forties is on the north end. Um, and uh, without uh, as opposed to being a replica of the nineteen seventy-seven and two thousand and four uh portions of the building.
Great.
We are, we will shift back to uh Wayne Powderly with Coming Group and uh touch on our budget update.
Excellent. Uh, yes, so as I mentioned earlier, uh, we had two independent companies. Uh, one was a third-party uh sub to LRS Architects, and then Penn's Contractors did their own separate budget as well. We have both budgets came back in at the same time and both very close, surprisingly close, which was a, a good thing to see. It was uh both obviously very accurate for today's market. Um, unfortunately, we were a bit over budget, um, but over the last four or five weeks, uh, the whole team has worked diligently uh, to get the budget back down to the original target of forty-point-five million, which we have done through the value engineering process. As Mike had mentioned, um, you know, we've reduced square footage on the floor plans. We've gone through mechanical systems, electrical systems, plumbing, finishes. Um, so we've gone through the whole gamut of all aspects of the, of the construction scope. And uh, through the value engineering, been able to can happily say we're back to the original um, budget of forty-point-five million. And that includes everything that Mike just showed on the, on the three floor plans. Uh, also, uh, part of the pricing exercise was the remodel of some of the z- existing spaces that we have to do. Uh, the jury assembly restrooms down in the basement level, uh, the sheriff's office, security office on the first floor, um, just adjacent to the lobby. And then also we are going to go back into the northeast corner of the existing first floor, uh, currently where administration sits. Uh, once they move out, we're going to go back into that area and build a new hearing room, which is uh required um, with this, with this new function as well. So that is covered under a separate one-point-five million dollar budget, um, which uh Lee has secured from a, a different source. Uh, but good news is we're right there and uh we are today obviously looking for your approval to proceed to the next level of uh design development, so we can continue with the uh, with the final construction set of plans.
Thank you for that update. I know uh you, some of you might have followed our Monday afternoon meeting, really taken a big look, long-term uh, analysis of the general fund and uh, you know, getting this funded over the next twenty years. Uh, it looks like uh, even if we have state legislative support for, for money, uh, you know, we're still going to be taking on some debt for this project. So thank you very much for staying at that forty-point-five number and uh um, yeah, well, looks like we'll be able to handle it, but it's just, it gets serious, you know, when you have to take on uh larger debt. Uh, you know, relative to the growth of the area and the expectations.
Yep, absolutely. And then just touching on some next steps. So today with your approval, uh, we'll be able to proceed into the next phase of design, design development. Uh, that'll take another couple of months and then uh directly after that, we'll get right into CDs, construction documents, which are the final set of documents that will be submitted to the city for plan review and approval. And also be used for the hard bidding uh to the subcontractors to establish the GMP. Um, and then along the way, I'll keep the uh, all the stakeholder groups updated, including the end users. And then, um, uh, yeah, so that'll get us to our goal still is for final CDs and submit to the city uh in early September. And then through uh plan review, permit review, we're still hoping to great, great ground in uh early twenty twenty-four.
Commissioner Dare, did you have something?
Um, well, I know when you design something on a napkin, you're not paying for it, because that's what we did with my first house. And I know when we first had those plans, it got really, really big, what sixty-six thousand square feet? So you've actually cut approximately twenty-one percent off the square footage. Because it seemed like I'm looking at those in original and I'm thinking like, wow, this is, this is getting really big. But I think it's incredibly important to um, keep our costs where we, where we planned on. And with um, the economy at the moment with um, what's going on, it's more important than ever. So I, I really appreciate you putting it down, keeping it what we need. And I would hope the parking garage would be adequate, seeing that we're eliminating this parking spot and that parking spot. Um, I know Ben doesn't really think parking's unimportant, but we've had winter for six months this year. So parking will be important, and I know Lee will be talking about that more in the future. So anyway, um, yeah, I think it's important to keep it at the cost that we um, earlier determined.
Thank you, uh, Commissioner. And I, I want to applaud uh the team and the stakeholder, the core stakeholder groups. Everyone uh spent a lot of time um, looking at how can we um, find a cost-effective building that's going to meet everyone's operational needs. Um, and each group um, kind of came together and identified areas where we could tighten things up um, in ways that still allowed uh the building to function uh at the highest level. And so it was a long process. Um, there was uh, a lot of back and forth. And you're seeing just a, a snippet of the effort that went into getting us to where we are today. So I, I appreciate um, the uh State Courts team, um, the Sheriff's Office team, facilities. Um, and then the design and project team um, all had a hand in getting us to where we're at.
I would love to, uh, I, I would, in the ideal world, we'd be in a position where we could build more for the future. Where we could think about that fourth floor, where we could, you know, do meaningful shelling. Mean- meaningful work on that third, third floor shell. Um, but um, we're not, that is not where we are at. I mean, um, uh, we, we're arriving at this moment with very minimal capital reserves. Um, and uh, you know, we, you know, coming from that relatively weak financial position, I would say. Um, and hearing the other day that for every ten million dollars worth of debt, we're going to take on, which we may have to, we, we may have to uh finance almost the entire cost of this building. Uh, and for every ten million dollars worth of debt, we're going to end up paying six million dollars worth of debt service. Um, this is uh, you know, constraining that, the building to um, to these, these three floors and, and this forty, forty million dollar costers is the most prudent choice. I mean, even though, even though um, you know, building for the future would save us on, on future costs. Um, you know, it, it wouldn't save us on, on those debt service um, payments, which are going to be substantial.
And I think we're uh, could go back to, we may have one remaining, one or two remaining slides, and, and I think we'll be wrapping up our presentation. I think it was just Q and A, Lee. Yes, so we are at the final slide. So I guess we can uh, end the slide presentation and be available for any final follow-up questions that the commissioners may have.
Oh, just looking forward to proceeding. Thank you very much for the professionalism, everybody working together here right now. Uh, you know, I, I would hope that uh, there's good clarity in the, you know, you saw the estimates, you know, we've done a lot of work with the estimates now. Inflation, uh, interest rates, everything's up. Hopefully, uh, you know, it'll be stable or maybe even going down cost of construction. And I don't know, I'm not a professional in this area, but uh, uh, yeah, we've seen, it's just like a, a, a wild ride right now. Knowing the cost of materials and just construction and everything. So let's uh, keep the lines of communication open as we proceed.
And I, I think to close, that is the direction uh that we're looking for from the board today. We, when we met previously, uh, we'd mentioned we would be back at this stage. This is really an important check-in on the budget, um, with the SD uh, plans being complete. Um, and we uh would appreciate the board's support to move forward to submitting for permits and proceeding to our uh guaranteed maximum price.
So uh, we're looking for a, a motion, uh, um.
I move approval of the schematic design as presented.
A second.
Okay, any other discussion? Seeing then Commissioner Chang?
Yes.
Commissioner Dare?
Yes.
And chair votes, yes. Thank you very much. It feels like a somber moment, but this is full speed ahead. Let's go.
John, I do have a question. If you know, how many more bathrooms are we adding then? Uh, I know, I know bathrooms are expensive. I'm just curious. You said you had, you needed to add more and definitely I can understand that.
Yeah, the, we, we got plenty of private, uh, non-public restaurants throughout, because you know, the judges' chambers each have one. Um, we're adding, um.
Eleven, I, I think it would be eleven to twelve different locations unless I'm missing one. The fixture count uh would be separate. Um, I don't think we're prepared to talk about the fix- actual fixture count, but.
I wasn't asking for that.
Yeah, but somewhere around twelve uh, new locations.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right.
So now we knew it was tight before, so we were trying to make sure we've got enough restrooms and as well as just planning ahead. You know, and get the full three floors done. So each floor has its own restroom bank and stuff.
Well, interesting, going down fourteen thousand square feet, but adding more bathrooms, probably. You know, the, the contrast.
And I, I would just say, um, it, you know, in terms of somberness, you know, my, my the only reason I feel glum is because of our, our financial state at the county. Uh, this, this building is going to uh, do amazing things for our, our community in terms of providing access to justice. So, thank you for your work on it.
Lee, do you know, I know the city is talking about narrowing Greenwood, um, like by our our small five thousand square foot building to one lane each way there and making sure the parking is adequate. When are, are they going to go all the way down Greenwood and make it one way each way by the courthouse? Or is that not in the plan?
So I don't think that's been finalized. We've, in our conversation. So I don't think that's been finalized. We've, in our conversations with the city, their future plans for Greenwood have. For Greenwood, excuse me, have come up and they've kind of given us a thumbnail sketch of of what they expect that to look like, but. In terms of final plans, I don't have that information.
Okay, I didn't think it went all the way down to where the courthouse is, but I, I'm not sure.
So I mean, I'm excited about this project. You know, the state legislature may come through with some some dollars for this project. And there may be other opportunities and we shouldn't stop looking and right now may be the time to look. You know, if there's federal infrastructure dollars or different pools of dollars coming through the feds and the state. You know, we have a project, we know it's on the ground, it's going to be happening, we know the number and, you know, we should advocate advocate for other other investments from the state or the feds too. So this, this is exciting. I'm real, real, real happy we're proceeding.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Item number seven, a building that's right in the middle of the parking area downstairs at this point in time. AJ Tucker.
So again, Lee Randall, Facilities Director, I really just have a very brief update for you. As, as I'm sure you've been following, we came through the process of offering the building for sale, which is the first step. In being able to submit a, an application to the city of Ben into the landmarks commission. And so over the next several weeks, we'll be putting together now that we know that. In, based on that offering, it won't be transferred to a private party. We didn't receive any bids for the building. So. Based on having fulfilled that step over the next several weeks, we'll be putting together some specific options for the board to consider. And there's a range of options and we're looking very carefully at those and we'll be back. Probably close to the end of, end of May. Of course, we have budget week in there and we'll be looking at how to schedule that. But in late May, early June. Our team expects to be back with some concrete options for the board to consider. Which would then be included in our formal application to the city. We have some drafts of that application underway and the team's been working on it. And those will be the next steps. That's really the extent of the formal update. I wanted to make sure that we checked in with the board to, so you were aware of. Where the process stood and what the next steps were, but I'm happy to answer any questions.
Well, we sure got some phone calls for some individuals that were excited. Hey, maybe I want that building, but it's basically more expensive to move it than to build a new structure of any sort. So is. It's the historic value that is the kind of the catch twenty two there, knowing that it's a hand stacked. Rock building that structurally would need to be redesigned and engineered to be rebuilt anyway. So it's pretty tricky. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Item number eight, agreement with Cascade Natural Gas for the sale of landfill gas generated at not landfill.
Morning Commissioners, for the record, Chad Santola, Director of Solid Waste. I'm pleased to bring to you today a motion for approving. The county administrator's signature on an agreement with Cascade Natural Gas for the sale of landfill gas from not landfill. Little bit of background and history on how we got to where we are. Over my career here, the department has looked a number of times at at getting some beneficial use out of the gas that's generated through not landfill. And about ten years ago, we actually entered into agreement with a with a company to to do that. However. They were unable to secure financing for the project. Challenge over the years has been. Primarily not landfill is a is a midsize landfill and you need a certain amount of methane. Coming out of the landfill to make an economically viable project. So that was, that was our challenge. With the change, climate changes that are occurring, there the the carbon market has changed to a point where. These smaller projects like not landfill have some economic viability. One of the last assignments my predecessor, Tim Shimkey, gave me was to develop a solicitation for a landfill gas project for the landfill. And back in November of twenty twenty one, we we issued a solicitation and received six proposals for a project. Four of them were were private developers. And two were natural gas utility companies. And we, we formed a committee with Commissioner Chang. Custody with the road department, the former finance director Greg Munn, myself, Tim Shimkey and. We secured a tend engineering for technical assistance with us on the process. And ultimately came down to moving forward with the negotiation with Cascade Natural Gas for a project. Negotiations took a while. It's a, it's a, there's a lot of detailed technical regulatory and liability issues to deal with. In this and we arrived at it at an agreement a couple of months ago. So with with that, we're moving forward today to get that agreement moving. Cascade Natural Gas is planned, it's about a two year process for for permitting and construction of a project, and they're going to be investing about fifteen million dollars in infrastructure for this. Our current system at not landfill, we operate strictly for regulatory compliance. We we control surface emissions as well as subsurface migration of landfill gas coming off the landfill. And Cascade Natural Gas essentially will take over operation of that that system for gas collection. And they'll, they'll likely be expanding the field, adding additional gas wells to the site, and we're looking. Forward to a minimum twenty year operation agreement with them for generating natural gas out of the landfill. Their, their system will take that gas and clean it up, odorize it to. And and distribute it into the the local gas distribution network in Bend here. It was one of the the positives we liked about Cascade, Cascade Natural Gas's proposal was. This gas generated at the landfill would be consumed locally. So. We're getting a pretty substantial environmental benefit out of, out of the project. We're looking at revenues from ranging in. About. I think it's three hundred fifty to a little over six hundred thousand dollars. Per year during the the life of the project, that that about that revenue is variable depending on gas production at the landfill and. Methane from a facility like this is is similar to a commodity on the stock market. There's a market tile market for things like this and. There are spot values that that do vary day to day on this. That's, that's overall where we are today with this.
We're ready to proceed with a contract with Cascade Natural Gas Corporation. So and then the volume, the gas. Creation will go up and down over time too, correct?
It'll, it'll continue to rise for a period of time. The, the, the gas production curve out of waste, once it's buried, varies from about twenty to thirty years to peak out. So. Waste we're putting in the ground today through twenty twenty nine will continue to grow in in the, the, the gas generation rate. Then it'll start tapering off. The agreement with Cascade is structured for twenty years on the initial agreement and then we'll, we'll move forward with five years increments after that, just. Depending on how gas production is performing at the landfill.
And the landfill cells have been designed for this capture for many years now, correct?
Essentially, yes. The, we, we, we do have to monitor migration primarily off of the older parts of landfill that we're not lined. So the liner system itself is, is designed to, in part to contain that, that gas within the landfill.
And capture it. So I mean, it's already been designed. The part of the, the capture is designed as, as the, the, the layers of. Of waste get put in because we have some pipes in there.
Correct. Yeah, there's a series of vertical wells on the site. One of the things we did do in the negotiation phase with Cascade. Our, our fill plan up until about eight months ago is we were essentially filling to the elevation of Twenty Seventh Street. And then we would come across a landfill with a final lift to to find our elevations. It ranged from that elevation to about thirty feet above Twenty Seventh Street. Cascade Natural Gas asked if we could, if we could backfill the areas that are already have already have waste on them to final grade, so they could get vertical wells in sooner. You really can't install a vertical well when you haven't completed filling. There's too much of a risk of losing that that well during filling operations. So we did that modification. We also have it. Basically, any point we have in the landfill where we can collect gas, we do. Our, the recirculation system for managing the liquid in the landfill does not operate continuously. So. When that system is not pumping, those, those pipelines are used for gas collection. We have a kind of a dual purpose system out there for that.
Great.
Well. I, I'll just say that I was really glad to be able to participate in the proposal review and interview process for the. You know, for this, the six entities who put forward proposals. Gave me a great opportunity to learn about this project and. The incredible benefits it's going to provide. I mean. We're developing a local renewable energy source. Fifteen million dollars of investment is going to mean a lot of jobs in construction and in operation. It's going to mean a, a new revenue source for our solid waste department. And there are going to be substantial climate benefits from. Taking methane that was being produced anyway and actually capturing it and and putting it into the local energy system. And allowing us to leave more fossil natural gas in the ground. So I'm very excited about this project and. You know, I guess my only questions would be. Well, what's been happening over the last year? You know, because we, we conducted those interviews quite a while ago.
It took a while.
Yeah, so what, what's, you know, what, what is? What kind of has happened between then and now in term, you know, in in terms of kind of. Firming up the agreement or investment or, or, or whatever else that, that, that took a little while.
Cascade Natural Gas has pre-ordered some of the equipment. They, they, they can't complete that order process until we do have that agreement signed with them. We, when we originally were negotiating, the, the, the structure I envisioned was that they would permit their facilities exclusive of our, our permits for not landfill. The, the, the one key permit is our Title V air quality permit and. That's a federal, federal permit that the DEQ here in Oregon administers. They, they would not allow us to separate that facility from our Title V permit. So we had to do a bit more negotiation and and get into a bit more detail on. On how that, that permit that the county holds will work with them operating a facility that. That they own under our permit. So that, that took a little bit of time. You know, the, the, the market has been interesting because. Utilities like Cascade Natural Gas are under regulatory obligations to. Find other renewable sources of natural gas. So that, that market continues to grow and is continues to be strong. Cascade Natural Gas is fully committed to making this work for themselves. So they have a successful project in Billings, Montana. That, that works well for them too. So. I was kind of curious, I looked into this a few months ago, just with the, you know, there's definitely a movement to reduce reliance on natural gas and more reliance on electricity. In the landfill world, that trend, we transitioned from gas to electricity projects where you would run an engine and produce electricity to these RNG projects. There really hasn't been a migration back towards electricity production off landfills. This RNG process and is, is still holding very strong.
Yeah, I was able to.
You only have to look at your natural gas bill to. See that the market for natural gas is still pretty strong right now.
I think that transition away from that's going to take generations.
It'll be a little while.
Yeah.
I was able to tour the Roosevelt site run by Republic up in Washington, and that's what they're doing there and. And, you know, they have the big reciprocal engine generator sitting in a building. Mothballed and they have a jet engine mothballed and now they have the RNG. So they've been trying for a long time. It's next size up. So they're able to do that with the. The, the volume of gas that's coming off of there. But yeah, they're, they're at RNG now also. So that was good to see.
Yeah, that, you know, that's a great example of just how the market for what you can do with landfill gas has changed. They, there was substantial investments in the power plants there for electricity. They basically unplugged those and went to renewable natural gas with their program.
Yeah, I mean, they mentioned that the big reciprocal engines aren't worth moving. They just mothballed them.
Yeah.
And we could have done that fifteen years ago, you know, we could have been right there with them.
We looked at those technologies, yeah.
So you said Cascade Natural Gas has a operation in Billings, Montana?
They do, yes.
So is it landfill?
It is, it is, it is at a landfill and it, you know, essentially the, the, the infrastructure and, and system is, is similar to what they would be building here.
Yeah, okay, that was interesting to hear. Great.
It's, it's not Cascade Natural Gas specifically.
Okay, well, thank you.
But the experience is within.
Not in the Cascades.
The experience is within the, you know.
Yeah, but landfill gas to pipelines is like this. Great. And so from Deschutes County, the residents of Deschutes County's point of view, we're, we're selling landfill gas. I mean, that's the product that that's available here. And, you know, just like Commissioner mentioned, big infrastructure is pretty darn exciting to be able to see this and to be beneficial use for many years to come. What I, I envision a big spreadsheet associated with your operation. What, what, where do these revenues expected to be? You know, utilized for the next twenty years?
You know, we're, we're working for, you know, we're approaching our budget for next fiscal year. Rate increases are a big part of it. So this will definitely help, you know. Minimize the rate increases over the years. Where we would put that money, I, I haven't speculated.
It was pretty flexible from your point of view.
Absolutely, yeah.
And then, because I just think of the, you know, post closure, you know, thirty year window out there too is something we just need to keep management on. So I mean, it could go anywhere, you're saying.
It, it could, on the, on the, the post closure fund, that, that is funded. So we, we, we transferred funds into that periodically. And so the, the, the revenue from this will not go for something like post closure maintenance. It'll, you know, we've, we've got a lot of infrastructure coming down the road. Again, you know, helping keep rates down.
Chad, when do you think the peak of six hundred and forty thousand annual revenue will come in then?
They're on their, their form, they provided with their proposal. That was in. Approximately ten years into the, eight to ten years into the project.
Okay.
Yeah.
So that's the most, but then what if the prices go up?
Then the revenue goes up. Again, this is our, our. We get thirty percent of the market value of that and that market does vary and. You know, perhaps that, you know, I would expect the RNG market, that value may go up over time because it's becoming more and more important for the, for the nation.
You, you can, you can remind me, Chad, but I, I, if I remember correctly. There were proposals that were structured very differently and this is sort of a risk sharing model, you know. Prices go up, we get more, prices go down, we get less. But there are other proposals that sort of committed. Maybe more money upfront and money could. Less coupled to the price of, you know, to the price of the natural gas than this proposal, but which had all sorts of other kinds of risks associated with them.
The, this, the, the approach Cascade Natural Gas had was, was the most secure as far as risk. Some of the, the other models, in particular from the, the private developers were for like vehicle fuels and things like that. And the, a lot of this is driven by carbon credits and tax credits. And they're extremely volatile in these other markets. And in fact, some of them over, over my time with the county have gone away. Some have gone up, gone up, but there's just a substantially higher level of risk with those. And we want to go with something stable, as stable as we could for the county. But. As I mentioned earlier, the, the, the concept of generating the gas and consuming it locally is, is something that I think we all could be proud of doing.
Great. With that, I'll, I'll move approval of county administrator's signature of document number. Twenty twenty three dash one one five in agreement with Cascade Natural Gas Corporation for landfill gas sales.
I'll second the motion.
Any other discussion? Seeing then Commissioner Chang?
Yes.
Commissioner Dare?
Yes.
And Chair votes, yes. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Commissioner. I want to thank Commissioner Chang for his participation in this process. This was a very technical evaluation to go through and I do appreciate your, your time and involvement with us on that.
I appreciate, I appreciated the technical teams holding my hand through the process.
Thanks again.
Thank you, Chad.
So we're about ten or fifteen minutes early, but it looks like folks are in the room for the next item update on Deschutes River mitigation and enhancement committee. Thank you very much for joining.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Talk water.
Yeah, for the, for the record, I'm Tarek Rawls, Associate Planner with the Community Development Department. And before you today is kind of an informational update with some members of the Deschutes River Mitigation Enhancement Committee. I'm just going to be really brief here and just kind of set the table and I'll let them give their presentation. But the committee, the Deschutes River Mitigation Enhancement Committee acts as an advisory committee in the distribution of grant funding. Provided by Central Oregon Irrigation District. For Oregon Department of Fish and Wildlife to assist with restoration projects in the upper Deschutes River. And so today we have on the end there, we have, we were supposed to have Doug Watson, but instead we have Craig Horrell, who's kind of the, the main representative of COID. The irrigation district. Then we have Kate Fitzpatrick here, who's with Deschutes River Conservancy and then Jerry, Jerry George, Gerald George here from ODFNW. So those are the three folks that'll be giving you an informational update today. I'm here if you need any. Anything at all, at all, but they're kind of here for the actual update. So I'll let you, I'll let them take it away.
Thank you for joining us.
All right. History, good morning, Commissioners. Glad to be here. So in nineteen.
So in nineteen eighty-nine, uh Central Oregon Irrigation District built the hydro facility along the Deschutes. Uh with that, um we have FERC licensure uh on on that stretch. And part of that was establishing an M and E fund to be run through the county. Uh and that's based off the revenues. Right now, uh we give about ninety-eight thousand dollars a year to uh that fund. Uh and has the M and E uh committee uh decide how to spend that money. Uh today, uh we
Mitigation and enhancement, just making sure we're getting the terms introduced.
Yeah, M and E mitigation enhancement. Yes, I'll I'll use as many acronyms I can.
Well, you're you already slipped FERC through there real fast. Yeah.
Uh so uh today, uh that fund has five hundred and seventy thousand dollars in it, uh roughly. Um just around ballpark number. That is held in a LGIP account by COID. Uh we contract
More big acronyms.
COID.
List here.
So it's it's a public uh
I know.
I you know those. And then um and then we have the committee decide how to spend that money. And then contracts are are given. And right now, uh ODFNW uh is contracting for the past five years doing fish studies. Uh and COID has been signing the contracts and paying on on that. Um so that's where we're at today, and that's based off of uh several year. I've been on, I was on it prior to Doug. Um I was trying to free up my time for a little more other things. And uh I still get called into these things. But uh right now, I think uh we always want to see the projects. Uh the last big project we did with the uh mitigation enhancement fund was the fish ladder uh at the dam. Uh North Canal Dam on Division. Uh and that was with grant funding and M and E funding. Um so someday uh we'll get back to some projects, I I would think. But I'll turn it over to Kate to talk about how the committee runs.
Yeah, good morning Commissioners. For the record, Kate Fitzpatrick, Executive Director of the Deschutes River Conservancy and the current Chair of the M and E Committee. I'll just say a few words about the committee and then I'll pass it on to Jerry to talk more about how the money is being spent. Um we are a committee. You have the list in your packet, um seven voting members as well as some agency support. Uh we're really grateful for Tarek to staff secretary for the committee. He does a great job. Uh we're currently meeting biannually on average. And in those meetings, uh ODFW gives an update on the activities they're currently spending the money on. And then importantly, we are focused on round roundtable coordination with all the folks in the room. And I just wanted to highlight um as you all are well aware, there's a lot going on in the basin right now focused on Upper Deschutes Habitat Restoration. And so this is a really um opportune time for the committee to continue that coordination. So as you know, the Habitat Conservation Plan that Craig and his partners in the irrigation world is um worked on is now being implemented. Flows are coming back in the river, and a lot of the conservation groups are starting to focus their energy on more investment and restoration. That's very synergistic with what the M and E Committee was set up to do. So having that um opportunity to have that committee meet and and continue coordinating among partners is really useful. And we think the future will um be able to leverage the M and E funds in an even more impactful way. And I'll pass it over to Jerry.
All right. Good morning Commissioners. Uh Jerry George, District Fish Biologist for Oregon Department of Fish and Wildlife here in Bend. Um I'll just give you uh kind of an overview of the main tasks and duties. So right now, the fund is being spent to support a full-time ODFW employee. Who is uh focusing their their efforts on um fish uh and water quality monitoring in the in the Deschutes River, mostly above Bend, but a little bit in middle Deschutes below Bend. The primary
You or somebody else, somebody on your staff.
The month, yeah, it's a staff member. Yep. Um and so I get just a little bit of background. In the nineties, when the when the um fund was established, ODFW had more staffing and we did uh more in-stream actual on-the-ground work uh with this with this fund. And some of that work was not really very successful for fish um fish habitat restoration because of the the flow management at the time. Uh so the use of the fund has kind of evolved through time. And right now it's being used to support a salary and a staff person for monitoring. Um but as Craig mentioned, it's been used for other uh purposes in recent years, including match on the North Canal Dam Fish Ladder. Um and that's one of the items that the the current coordinator does is they we have a monitoring system in place in the top and bottom of that fish ladder. And they go out and tag fish and look at um fish use of that system. Uh the other, one of the other main tasks is uh Upper Deschutes River Fish Monitoring. Um the um M and E Coordinator uh coordinates uh raft electrofishing uh below Wiki Up Dam twice a year. Uh and that those data helps support um our fish management of the river. Um and then they also, it's going to help as we get into um different flow regimes under the Habitat Conservation Plan, um assessing uh fish responses to increase winter flows and decrease summer flows and a more stable hydrograph. And whether or not we see an increase in fish abundance and that reach. Um another item that they're been working on is uh juvenile trout estimates uh in the upper middle Deschutes. Um juvenile trout can be really hard to quantify in big rivers. So they're working on a couple kind of novel approaches to sample small uh stream reaches along the edges. And to estimate estimate uh juvenile trout production um at a number of sites, thirteen locations uh between Wiki Up and Steelhead Falls. Um the last couple of summers, the uh person in this role has taken on an increasing responsibility with brown bullhead removal at Crane Prairie. Um brown bullhead are a a non-native catfish species that have been introduced to a lot of our water bodies. Um and um what what the M and E Coordinator does is that they train and supervise and mentor uh to OSU Cascades students for twelve weeks every summer. Um and head up that brown bullhead removal program. And the goal of that is to benefit um the fisheries in Crane Prairie. Um and uh potentially uh spotted frog recovery at brown bullhead or competitors of natives native trout and their potential predators of of Oregon spotted frog.
What is removal of brown bullhead catfish? Is that fishing or is there something else?
It's fishing with uh um four to twelve nets set out around the the lake. And those nets are checked every day. And yeah, the and then those the non-native of fish are removed from the lake system. Um one thing where we've been in in discussions, myself, the in M and E Coordinator and local Forest Service staff, um revisiting some of the projects that were done in the nineties and early two thousands. Um they include uh gravel enhanced spawning gravel enhancement projects and large woody debris uh projects for fish habitat, mainly between Crane Prairie and Wiki Up and just below Wiki Up. And uh a number of those projects um need re- refreshed. Um need new gravels added or uh the habitat enhanced again as it's been a number of years. So we're talking with Forest Service staff about uh how to prioritize and um come up with some strategies to make the refresh those projects. Um the the person in this role is also doing a lot of macro invertebrate sampling the last two summers. Uh and that's again to look at um sort of baseline conditions and the first few years of Habitat Conservation Plan implementation to see how macro vertebrates are doing in the river. And um as winter flows increase, you know, we hope and expect to see uh response, a positive response uh for invertebrates, which are a huge uh prey source for fish. Uh so there's a number of sites that are being sampled for macro invertebrates. And some of those results are that are coming in are really interesting. Um and then there's also sites that are in some of the cold water tributaries like Fall River and Tummelo Creek, uh which have different, more natural invertebrate assemblages. Uh the person is also in the position is also collaborating with out-of-basin researchers. So we have a lot of researchers come in and do uh want to gather samples for uh stickleback uh genomic studies or um parasite. There's a a whitefish and trout parasite study going on in the basin. So they help uh other out-of-basin biologists collect samples. Uh and then they also maintain twelve temperature loggers throughout the um upper middle Deschutes. And those temperature loggers kind of feed into a collaborative network with uh the city of Bend and Upper Deschutes Watershed Council into a big database. So those are kind of the the current duties and scope of the the activities of of the position at this at this time.
Great, thank you.
So what did you learn with the temperatures taken last year then? Are they higher than the prior year? I mean, do we have any?
Um well, in yeah, so the temperatures, they warmed up in certain reaches quicker because of um yeah, just in general, we had certain reaches that that do warm up quicker when we have hotter than average weather um and lower than average stream flow. That typically impacts the middle Deschutes below Bend the most is where we see those uh summertime temperature exceedances. Um but yeah, certainly last year was a stressful year uh for water and for for fish.
So they were saying that we weren't expecting flooding, but because our temperatures are going up, that a lot of rivers may be cooler than they have been this weekend. I mean, that was the story on the radio this morning.
Yes.
Yeah.
Right, yeah, I mean, huge snowpack this year. And then it's been such a cool spring and we're gonna hit maybe eighty degrees this weekend. So a lot of that's gonna be runoff. Um so especially like the Crooked River Basin, I think they're bracing for a lot of runoff this weekend.
The Little Deschutes is also pretty flashy.
Yeah, I'd say the Little Deschutes, I have a bet for five hundred CFS.
I drive across to get home. Twice a day I drive across it. So I'll watch the changes.
Yeah.
So a lot of the a lot of the monitoring activities you described are um very valuable kind of basic data collection activities. Um but we are, you know, as as we've heard, we're we're at this moment with the Upper Deschutes River where there is a there's an HCP, there's a um there's a forthcoming uh spotted frog recovery plan from the US Fish and Wildlife Service. So um we are at a moment where we really need to be thinking about we we absolutely need the basic data, but we need to be thinking about, you know, what we're doing to contribute to implementation of the HCP. Um you know, implementation of a recovery plan, you know, uh going beyond uh having basic information about the habitat to, you know, fixing the habitat, you know, doing doing some some pretty dramatic things to help with these um these species conservation efforts. I so I'm curious. Um you described a lot of those monitoring activities, but I'm wondering, you know, kind of at the high level, what we're learning, um you know, what 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 we're learning from from those data sets that will help us with those habitat uh enhancement and and recovery efforts.
Mm-hmm. Uh those are great, great questions. Um and the bullhead removal uh effort that I that I mentioned, that's directly, so the student interns are directly funded by the Habitat Conservation Plan Fund. Uh and so a lot of the focus of that effort is is for spotted frog recovery at Crane Prairie, just in terms of um removal of a potential threat uh to the the frog populations there in the Bullhead. Um other, I mean, so right now we're in the first kind of tier of the Habitat Conservation Plans. We have a hundred CFS minimum flows out of Wiki Up. Those will get ratcheted up through time and the hydrograph kind of more stabilized or returned uh to uh more similar to historic condition. And so, you know, going from a thirty CFS minimum flow to a hundred, we wouldn't maybe expect huge gains right off the bat. But once we get to year seven to twelve um down the road and we have five hundred, four or five hundred CFS winter flows, um we may see a really significant fish response. Um in terms of uh the frog response, um you know, we we work closely with Fish and Wildlife Service and um and and so a lot of the base baseline information is is really about the ecosystem health and recovery uh of the bugs, the fish, and the kind of the whole system is a lot of the data that we're gathering. And it's not necessarily frog-specific. Um but we are looking forward to you know, some of these bigger actions uh with restoration of some of the sloughs and off-channel habitats. And they could really have benefits for the whole system.
I I I wanted to ask about the five hundred thousand dollars plus in, you know, in the LGIP account.
Yeah, uh I can speak to that a little bit um as the one that writes the checks. So um we've got an issue right now. Um we put ninety-eight thousand dollars a year in. And uh the contract for this person um is a hundred and forty roughly. So we're going backwards on the account. And I think that um we have a tough decision to make as as a group because, you know, this information's valuable. But at some point, this M and E fund was for projects. And I think that's what you were getting to. So that's really the the M and E and Kate is the chair to try to negotiate these things. It was a half-time person for a long time, and then it became a full-time person with the understanding of five years. But once you implement it, it gets really hard to take it away. So uh we've got, we've got things to work through, but the five hundred and seventy thousand dollars is a group decision on whether that gets, you know, we pay that contract or we use the money for other things.
But there's there's not anything necessarily preventing you right now from from going beyond the hundred forty thousand dollar contract per year and using the five hundred and seventy for projects.
That's that's the intention. And we've been waiting over time to the meaningful place where these projects can make sense with the flows coming back. So um you know, the districts are contributing a hundred and fifty thousand a year to a restoration fund. We have this reserve. And then there's a parallel process at the Watership Council's leading in partnership with the DRC and the Land Trust to put together a strategic action plan that would jive with the recovery plan for the frog to prioritize where the best restoration actions are in the next five or ten years. So that can help actually guide where some of that money could be invested. And when we feel like we have good projects, working closely with ODFW, Forest Service, Fish and Wildlife Service, we would go through the regular M and E process of um entertaining a proposal, reviewing that as a committee and spending that money. And the goal over time is to um build that reserve and not, you know, not erode it. So we're having conversations with ODFW at the state level of how can we support ODFW's budget and the continued monitoring without eroding the reserves for projects.
Yeah, and then the tough thing coming up is we're the last two years of our thirty-year contract for the hydropower. We're renegotiating. And right now, the revenue is half of what we're making today. So we will go from
Now the revenue is half of what
If if we were to sign a new contract today, we have ten cents a kilowatt hour that we make today. If we signed a new contract, it would be five cents or lower. So uh the ninety-eight thousand probably is still the number, even if it's five cents, if we want to continue forward, but it can't really, once it goes beyond that at five cents, uh five cents is our break even uh for keeping that uh plant open. So I'm working hard with Kate to look at other options, but uh we don't have an answer right now for doing better. We we want to keep funding the M and E because that means that we're still making money on hydropower.
Right, right. Uh yeah, I don't want to get us off into a whole side Uh, yeah, I don't wanna get us off into a whole side discussion about energy markets, but. I am curious whether you have any, you have options to sell, sell your power to anybody else besides.
Yeah, we do.
Okay.
We're working on it.
Um, right, I, I, one of the other questions I wanted to ask is, um. Uh, there are. Um, sometimes you hear about mitigation funds that are set up, that are not uh. That you're not allowed to use to meet regulatory requirements. Um, and so I just wanted to make sure that, that the M and E funds could be used for. You know, implementation of H, components of the HCP.
I think originally this one was a hundred percent to be used to meet the FERC regulatory. Requirements along that stretch of river from where we withdraw the water and put it back in in nineteen eighty nine. And since then, it's, yeah, there were no trees along the river in that stretch um in eighty nine. And now you can't even see the trail.
Yeah, I'm not aware of any restrictions on this, but in addition, the way the habitat conservation plan was crafted was quite masterful. And it does not prescribe actions, and so you can do things in the river that might work towards those goals, but they're flow goals by and large. And so there's no direct tie to um a mitigation action under the HCP related to funding a restoration project.
We write a check.
So the OEDs and the state funding and all those grants are still in play for this work.
I think that's all the questions I have. I mean, I did, I did wanna say that, um, you know, I, um. I, I certainly understand the, the, and appreciate the importance of basic data collection and, and. You know, having a um, a baseline understanding of, of uh, of the river, of the upper basin, uh. And um, I also am aware of the, you know, the, the kind of. The broader statewide fiscal challenges um that ODF and W is facing, you know, that's, that's something I'm very. You know, I, I track uh as the legislature is, through its, its process, budgeting process this year, but. It, it, you know, it. Uh, it's hard to hear about, about money that could be used to, 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 to get some projects done. That are, are gonna turn the dial on, on habitat and not wanna see more of that money going into those things, so I, um. I, yeah, I, I don't know, I don't know what the answer is, but it's. There, there's definitely um some, some challenging tensions here.
I think we agree.
Any thoughts, Commissioner?
I did have a question, um, Jerry, you were saying in seven, uh, seven to twelve years, there'd be five hundred CFS releases up? That's from Wiki up, correct?
Uh, I'd have to look back at the.
When that pops in?
But it's four hundred to five hundred and it's uh several, yeah, there, it's, that's the third tier of.
Of right.
Flow increase.
At a hundred now, it's going to three hundred, and then it's gonna go up to five hundred.
Correct.
And then I, I've heard it mentioned that Wiki up never will be fill again. That's because we're gonna be letting out so much water, is that, do you concur with that?
Uh, it'll really depend on the water year, how much Wiki up fills um in, in water years like this one. There's the potential for it to still fill, but based on it being drained first, it'll. Be less likely to fill, I guess, and um, uh, cuz Crane Prairie is being held full. For frog recovery, uh, so Wiki up's ten, early in the season is where the water for irrigation is being pulled from.
Right, I mean, it already started, what, April first? It started letting out more.
Yeah, and if you let out more winter flow, then there's gonna be less, a little, little bit less storage going into irrigation season and in most water years.
Commissioner Derek, yeah, the models show that um, it has a potential to fill, but very rarely.
Like rarely, like every twenty years?
I was gonna say twenty was my guess, but.
Okay, I'm guessing.
Yeah, so it, it's, it's rare, but uh, we'll be using live flow to subsidize. So it's a give and take, but there'll be live flow for the farmers to have their water.
Right, yeah, then the, the importance of Wiki up filling diminishes. The more water we save in COID and the more that that water can be shared with North Unit.
Yeah.
So, uh, you mentioned fish ladder for North Unit diversion, is that what?
It's uh, at the North Canal Dam, there are three diversions, um, North Unit, Central Oregon Irrigation District, Wally.
Okay, so it's a north diversion, not North Unit diversion.
It's, we call it the North Canal Dam, it's the old name from the thirties.
I'm glad I asked for that clarity, so it's not just your North Unit. Great, well, good information, uh, you know, I think this is a kind of a. Update that was set up many years ago that we'll get to see annually, it's interesting to hear the, you know, the status. Um, one thought, is, is there any like, uh? Big ticket item that's out there, like, man, yeah, if we had another million dollars, we, we'd go do this, or, you know, cuz you're studying. But if, you know, is there some like, that, that next thing that's like right, right there, but we just can't pay for it? I mean, you know, just something in your back pocket.
I think it all revolves around flow, so once we get to this first benchmark, three hundred CF.
Yeah, so it is kind of queer, quiet period.
That's when you're gonna start seeing, okay, now it benefits to spend money in these places. And we'll see where those places are.
Mm hmm.
As you get the flow.
Good, okay, that helps, cuz, yeah, we've been in that low flow regime, uh, and we're working our way back up.
There was, there was some, uh, there was reference to very early projects. That were funded out of this, this, this program.
Hmm.
That were not successful, I mean, was flow really the kind of?
Um, I, I remember I did one for the Old Mill District, rock barbs uh along the walkway in front of Anthony's, the gap. Uh, you know, along there, and those were for fish spawning, and I just don't think that those worked very well.
Yeah, one of, one of my first experiences at the DRC about twenty years ago was an assessment of a lot of the work that had been done. Which included large woody debris and bank stabilization in the upper deschutes. And almost all those projects failed because of that flow regime fluctuating.
Yeah.
And the erosion.
Yeah, it was hard to.
That's what'll be different.
It's hard to anchor in things to, and have them stay in place and have it be effective and have it be effective as habitat in the winter time. Um, when you had such a variability in flow.
Great, thank you very much for the update, great to talk to everyone.
Thanks very much, Commissioners, and just wanted to thank the speakers, thanks for your time.
For coming, thanks for Craig for stepping in.
So that's it for our published agenda, we could go through other items, we have executive sessions today also. Um, do you have other items to start with?
I do, thank you, Commissioner, we, we have both Jen Patterson and Peter Gatawski both here to talk about potential board appointments to.
Hmm, okay.
Wolf Depredation Compensation Advisory Committee as well as uh the Planning Commission. Oh, please.
I really think it's important, and I don't wanna do it at the end of the meeting.
You're right.
Because she's been an incredible partner in our meeting for the last couple of years, and that's honoring Stephanie.
Yes.
For all of her work.
Sitting there quietly in the back.
I know, and busy training, because I think this might be your last day, right? But we do have something for you. Yeah, it's a photo moment.
It's spring flowers.
Yes. So please come up and join us and know how much your professionalism has been appreciated, Stephanie.
And we're gonna get you on camera for a moment.
Oh, yeah.
Thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
Yeah.
I've been here for ten years. Ten years, ten years, yes.
Good, now you're, you're on film.
Yep, gotcha.
I know, I didn't wanna wait till the end, I wanted you to like, enjoy the moment, enjoy the day.
Well, I think of the, the evolution of what's happened, you know, in this room over the last five, six years, it's just amazing, you know. Microphones and then cameras and then video systems and live video and all the things we've been through. Okay, back to the other items. No, that was good, we, we knew we were gonna do that.
Jen and I were making eye contact, I think I'll, oh.
There you go.
Who's take the opportunity to go first, for the record, Peter Gatawski, uh, Community Development Director. Uh, under other items, this is a follow up, uh, looking for direction from the Board of County Commissioners this morning. And possibly a, a series of motions to consider appointing. Uh, the fir- first action would be for, for your consideration is appointing a, a candidate to. Uh, the, the Planning Commission representing the Tumalo area, for those that are in the audience or listening, watching. Uh, remotely, the Board of County Commissioners last Tuesday interviewed three candidates. Uh, Gabriel Kohler, Kelsey Carson, and Jack Farley. And then, and that was all done in person, uh, each commissioner was uh. Uh, paired with either myself or the Chair of the Planning Commission, Jessica Karas or the Vice Chair Nathan Hofcamp. To ensure that there wasn't a public meeting. Uh, there were, there were just a series of thirty minute interviews, and then on Monday, uh, there was, uh, there were three consecutive. Remote interviews with Robert Fish. And uh, so this affords an opportunity, uh, Mr. Chairman, to. Hear from, from the board to the extent you're ready to have that conversation. And uh, so uh, potentially a, a motion, staff can certainly come back if, if, if that's. The will of, of the commission, but just trying to keep this process going forward, there's a second interview. That set of interviews that will occur in the middle of May for the at large position. Um, so just, it's really important, if, if at all possible, we can. Have new appointments on the Planning Commission, they would be effective July first, but they would be able to. If they wanted to uh, uh, sit uh, uh, not on the dais. Um, but in the audience for Planning Commission meetings that occur in late May or in June. It's just an opportunity to assimilate them into the decorum of the Planning Commission. So with that, uh, I'm available to answer any questions, but really I'm looking for. The Commissioner's input on what was, uh, I think a very successful and thought provoking set of interviews. I uh, I was glad to be a part of that, just really as a, as an observer, not one making recommendations. But thought all the candidates were very impressive.
So, uh, you know, four people interviewed, this is the Tumalo seat, uh, there's another seat we'll be discussing here following also. Uh, it is early in a, uh, in the year for getting to July first appointment, um. Um, but yeah, and we've all been through the interview, so any starting point? This, and we haven't really, this is it, this is our public meeting deliberation.
Uh, I, I would just say I was, I was um, um, highly impressed by Kelsey Carson. I, I believe she would bring a lot to the Planning Commission. Uh, as a Realtor, and as an active Realtor. Uh, as someone who's uh grew up in Tumalo and, and is now raising children in Tumalo. Has a long life history and, and I, you know, in that respect, I, I believe would do an excellent job of, of representing. Uh, the Tumalo area, which, which is a community that has expressed a lot of concern about uh their, their. Their perceived lack of representation, um. And uh, I, I also just, I got a feel from, from Kelsey, from the way she described, the way she does her work. And um, her interactions in the community that, that uh, she would do an excellent job in terms of community relationships.
Great, thank you.
Actually, I'm, I'm really happy to have um, John or Jack Farley as the member adding, um, coming from Tumalo. And then the um, other three people, if they could come back and be part of our interview for the at large position. I think that would really be important, I think they were all really um outstanding, um, gained a lot of. Feel for their involvement in the community, I thought all of, you know, I was really happy with all the candidates, but um. Jack's has some amazing uh support letters from the community, and I would like to see him part.
Uh, so, yeah, it looks like we can make a decision today, uh, so. I really uh, am supportive of Kelsey Carson, uh, it was really a joy meeting her and understanding where she's coming from. Uh, as a, a parent, but the multi generation and the uh, the Realtor experience in the background. Uh, I wanna absolutely thank uh Jack Farley and Robert Fish and Gabriel for all being involved. Uh, you know, this is exciting, it was a quiet time previously when we were trying to appoint planning commissioners, and all of a sudden it got really exciting. Uh, as I say, uh, Kelsey was just very impressive and uh, what she can bring to the seat would, uh, you know, really be good. And uh, I mean, Jack's showing his uh, uh, passion for the subject and uh. Uh, you know, he can be still involved at this time, uh, so, yeah, I mean, that, that's a, a second vote for, for Ms. Carson.
Well, thank you Commissioners, for your consideration, if you would like, if you feel comfortable doing it, uh, this morning, I, I, I was. Communicating with uh Dave Doyle Legal Counsel, and, and certainly, if you're comfortable, you could make a motion. I would respectfully be asking for two motions, one is uh, to the extent that Kelsey Carson is, is the candidate. Uh, you would uh, uh, essentially make that motion and see if it was passed. Secondly, as I mentioned earlier in the year, um. Because of the ability to create an at large position due to some vacancies. Uh, there was direction, uh, and I think support for reallocating uh. Uh, Vice Chair Nathan Hofcamp, who was originally appointed to fill. Uh, a vacancy midterm with uh Commissioner Les Hudson, that was a Bend area. Excuse me, that was a, that was an at large position. Mr. Hofcamp lives in Bend, and so what we had talked about for several months is reallocating. Commissioner Hofcamp to the Bend area position, which frees up the at large position, which again is going to be uh. Subject to a series of interviews from the board in May, so the second motion would be, cuz you're. We, we need a four year term now, would be uh, consideration for Nathan Hofcamp for a, a full four year term. Um, so that's also for your consideration uh this morning, is our, our two respectful motions to fill up those. Uh, two positions, and that would be effective July first of this year. Did that make sense?
Okay.
Do we need separate motions?
I would make two separate motions.
Go ahead and appointment for the Tumalo seat, I guess.
Yeah, um, so I would move. I would move appointment of Kelsey Carson um for the uh Tumalo area seat on the Planning Commission.
And I'll second it, so. Let's say I do support that. Uh, any other discussion? Uh, seeing then Commissioner Chang?
Yes.
Commissioner Dare?
No.
And uh, I will vote yes on that, so that would be uh, support for Kelsey Carson in the Planning Commission. So then, uh, yeah, so clarity on this next one, uh, again, so um, so Nathan Hofcamp's in a at large seat.
He's in an at large seat, Mr. Chairman, uh, as a result of the former chairman Les Hudson. Resigning due to the fact that he was moving out of the area, so last year, the Board of County Commissioners appointed Nathan Hofcamp. To fill, what was it, two year, two years approximately left on that term. In light of the conversations that the board was, had, was experiencing, the passionate. Uh, and thoughtful testimony for Tumalo area representation. And to maximize geographic representation, we've had some conversations over the last several months to. Uh, due to Commissioner Kirby's, she's terming out uh, effective June thirtieth. She will have to serve two four year terms, she represents the Bend area, and so the thought process was. Mr. Hofcamp lives in, in the Bend area, relocating. Uh, uh, Nathan Hofcamp to that Bend area position, which then would be, because Maggie Kirby's four year term has ended. Mr. Hofcamp would, would uh, receive potentially that, that four year appointment. And then it frees up the at large position for greater geographic diversity, and that's something that. That has been underscored to staff, to administration, to the Board of County Commissioners. Um, as the Chair duly noted, there have been times when we haven't had a lot of interest in the Planning Commission. And I'm very grateful that there is so much interest today, um. Uh, you know, in the last, in the last. You know, in the last, in the last twelve months, there's been an at-large position, a sisters area position, a Tumalo area position. So each of those processes generated significant interest from candidates highly qualified, as the board knows quite well. And so that's how we're moving the deck, the chairs on the deck, so to speak, to ensure that the Planning Commission is, has the maximum representation afforded geographically.
So what comes to mind is the dynamics right now. We've heard some kind of the, the push and pull of people saying, hey, maybe you should recuse yourself. I mean, I, and I don't know how far we want to go with this today, but I want diversity on the Planning Commission and strong diverse opinions to be able to say, well, I see it like this and I see it like this. And it's turned into, well, you, you represent this, so maybe you shouldn't vote on this. And I, I'm really kind of struggling with that dynamic, not judging anybody, but it's just getting kind of weird where, you know, who should be at the table or not, you know, for appointing people and they have a strong opinion one way or another. I want them to be able to speak and not be challenged. Not to break outside of any ethics or law, but not to be challenged because they're coming from somewhere. So that's, yeah, my thought process right now as we're talking about this.
You know, you know, from that perspective, I think it's great that that Nathan Hoff Camp was willing to, you know, sever all ties with, you know, or all kind of contractual or you know, formal ties with Central Oregon Land Watch. So now that is not even going to be a perceived conflict of interest anymore.
Well, so then, as I say, you take the next step, you take the next step and you say, well, the perceived conflict of influence is you're a property owner and you want to develop something, so you should not be able to vote. I don't, I don't support that. So I mean, you can see, this could
I, I guess, you know, I it, it does come down to questions of, of conflict of interest. And, you know, there are, there are perceived, there are perceived conflict.
Advocacy of interest when you're a private property owner and there's private property owners going to be in the Planning Commission. So then, you know, I mean, I know Nathan is associated with the Central Oregon Land Watch, and you see in words, well, I'm not going to get paid by them anymore, so I'm going to change my view. Now, I don't, I don't expect him to change his view, but I don't expect, you know, challenges to private property owners that are at the table making advocacy positions. That's, that's what the Planning Commission's for. So as I say, I'm not here to debate that. I wasn't really prepared to go deep into this today. But I'm just letting you know, that's why I was like, hmm, what are we going to do here?
I think we have some differences opinion about what of a Planning Commissioner is. I mean, in my opinion, the, the the job of a Plan Commissioner is to study the law, listen to the public. You know, and it, there is when, when someone comes to, comes to that seat with an extremely strong advocacy position, we need to ask whether they're, they have the capacity to actually listen to the public and process that input and feed us recommendations, or whether they're coming to the, coming to the Planning Commission, basically just to push their own agenda. So I, you know, for me, that is, that is what we need to grapple with in terms of Plan Commissioner appointments. And when we ask people to recuse themselves from certain.
Well, yeah, so I don't, I don't, I don't support asking people to recuse themselves. I mean, this is a full public meeting for public, you know, land use decisions, setting the, the tone. A split decision is okay. I mean, I don't see why I don't want to put barriers on their decision-making. I want a vibrant discussion by diverse input. Diverse, you know, diverse positions. So, yeah, I mean, this is the one.
So Commissioners, I think, I just, to clarify, Peter, and help me out here, because I don't have all the documentation in front of me, but I think the, the board appointed Nathan to a two-year term for the at-large position to fill the balance of Les Hudson's term. So he represented the at-large position. The, the planning did not initiate a recruitment for the Bend area position at this time. So we would need to do something with Nathan in the position in order to open the at-large position that you'll be interviewing for in a couple of weeks, because otherwise that position wouldn't be vacant, because Nathan would have another year. So in effect, the board
Two years.
For another, well, last year was one year and then just one more year. Is that right?
You're right.
So I mean, so I don't, I don't mean to weigh in on the, on the candidates, but the board really could have a couple of options. One option would be to, to move Nathan, for example, to the Bend area position for one year or for a new term in order to open the at-large position that you'll be interviewing for in a couple of weeks to begin July 1st, because you didn't, you didn't add, you didn't recruit for a Bend area position.
That is correct. That the, the thought process that we have talked about is that the relinquishment of the, I mean, Nick is correct. The board can, can choose a number of appointment strategies. The thought process that I had was that the relinquish, if, 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 if the at-large position is relinquished, Nathan Hoff Camp was selected as a Planning Commissioner to fill Les Hudson's term for two years, and that the board could consider appointing Mr. Hoff Camp to a full four-year term. But it's, it, because the, the Bend area term has, will expire on June 30th. So there was a, there was a rationale to acknowledge that that opening affords itself a four-year term, and we're moving the decks, the chairs on the deck to accommodate geographic diversity.
Then we can do what Nick just said, and we could move him to that position for one more year.
It would be unprecedented, I think, to, I, I think for just putting it on the record where the board has, the board certainly has that ability to do so, of course, but it's I don't think the board has found itself a point appointing a Commissioner for, for one year following a circumstance where they were, they were appointed to fill it a two-year term. But you are right, Commissioner Dare, if that's something that was of importance, yes, it could be real, relocated, reallocated, just in the way that you have summarized, Commissioner Dare, and offered by
I just
by Administrator Nick Levan.
All, all I'm suggesting is not a new appointment, and certainly if our legal counsel has a different perspective, I was just, because he was appointed to two years. And we're not going through a process, I mean, and so it's, it would be a reallocation for a year rather than a new appointment. I just, I don't know what the terminology would be.
It's also, it's unusual to, I mean, that's the simplest thing. Well, it's
I'd like to just bring this back to a future meeting, you know, because I mean, that, you know, as I say, and remember, I'm talking about just setting the stage for how these diverse opinions can happen instead of having challenges back and forth. That's my only mindset here.
Yeah, and I would respectfully, and I, I would defer to legal counsel, but the, the role and responsibilities of Planning Commissioners is to me is a, is, is a separate issue from appointments. I mean, there's, there are expressed concerns about Planning Commission interactions that go beyond just one Planning Commissioner. I would defer to legal counsel on what those boundaries are. I know that that's going to be discussed tomorrow at a public hearing, but there's, I would offer for your consideration, there's the appointment process, and then there's how to ensure that the Planning Commission is, is functioning. Meeting their, their responsibilities as an independent advisory body, but happy to come back. We, we need to
Yeah, we made a big choice today.
Yeah.
Tumalo, Tumalo seat's been
Great, and I can come back
And next And there's layers to this. So I, and I mean, I'm, yeah, just want to be very businesslike. And I mean, this is the open public process here, right here.
Yeah, so I will come back next week, just, just
Yep.
And we need to have a sense of how, how we're going to collectively proceed with the at-large position. So thank you for your time. This is very helpful.
So if we don't figure this out, then we don't have an at-large position to offer.
Yep, thank you.
Right, and then we would have the, the, the bend position would be vacant, because that's the, that's the
Well, we've got May and June.
That's right.
Yeah, but we'll, we'll work through this. Okay. So let's, now let's just appoint half of the Wolf Committee, and then we'll really get somewhere today.
Commissioner James Patterson, Strategic Commissioners Manager, for the record.
I am here today first to go over the Wolf Depredation and Financial Assistance Committee, Deshutes County is in the process of establishing, establishing this committee per the request or recommendation ODFW. The first steps in this process is to nominate four citizens to this committee, two who represent owners or managers of livestock, two who represent coexistence or wolf conservation. So yesterday, we held panel interviews for five candidates for those four positions. The panels consisted of each Commissioner and a staff member. We interviewed two people for the owner and manager of livestock positions, John Leeson and Ethan O'Brien. In debriefing with each of you after those interviews, I believe there is consensus among the Commissioners on appointing those two positions to the owner or manager of livestock representation.
I mean, I support that.
Make excellent representatives.
Great, so Legal Counsel Cam, do we need to make individual motions for each of those positions, each of those people?
I'd make it cleaner.
Okay, great. So there'll be two motions for this position, one to appoint John Leeson and one to appoint Ethan O'Brien as representative owner or manager of livestock.
I move to appoint John Leeson as owner representative of livestock for the Wolf Committee.
Second. Any other discussion? Seeing none, Commissioner Dare? Commissioner Chang?
Yes.
And Chair votes yes? And then Ethan O'Brien?
I've moved to appoint Ethan O'Brien to the Wolf Depredation and Financial Assistance Committee as a livestock owner or manager representative.
Any other discussion? Seeing none, Commissioner Chang?
Yes.
Commissioner Dare? And Chair votes yes. Oh, we're moving right to this one.
Very easy. All right. Next, we have the representatives or the applicants for Representatives of Coexistence or Wolf Conservation. We had three applicants. We had Sarah Lee Lawrence, Donna Harris, and Brianna Alston. We have two positions open for that. There, I debriefed with each of you after those interviews. I have the rankings of one, two, three for those candidates. I can share that or just open it up to discussion amongst you on preferences to fill those vacancies.
So this was yesterday's interviews, yes.
I'd be interested in hearing the rankings.
Great, so Sarah Lee Lawrence was a top one or two candidate amongst all of you, either in the one or two position. Donna Harris was a one or two ranking for two of you in those positions. And then Brianna Alston was ranking in the top one or two positions for one of you. So I just did a score, adding the one, two, threes. Sarah Lee Lawrence came in at four, a low score is better in this case. Donna Harris came in at six, and Brianna Alston came in at eight.
So we're kind of in the same spot with the Planning Commission, you know, so I just refer to, you know, one of the candidates came on real strong as the Wolf Welcome Committee and, you know, really, really promoting that. But I'm in the same mindset where I really want that strong diverse opinions about, you know, what, what can be discussed at this committee.
And I, I think this is a lot different than the Planning Commission, which, you know, the Planning Commission is a, is a public input body. This committee is meant to is meant to, you know, to, to assemble to get, you know, the, the breadth of diverse perspectives in the room and have them wrangle out how this program is going to work. I mean, really, one of their biggest jobs is to just props, process compensation claims if they come in. So I, I don't have particular concerns about, well, I would also say that Donna Harris is clearly a, you know, she's, she's in, you know, a representative for Wolf Conservation or Coexistence with Wolves, which is exactly what we were soliciting for. We were not soliciting for a impartial, unbiased Planning Commissioner. So it's, I, I don't just, just, just because she, just because she has those values, it doesn't mean she, she's not a, a nice collaborative person who's going to be able to work with the rest of the, the group.
But I thought, actually, going back to the, the two other gentlemen, I thought Ethan actually came across to someone that was kind of a moderate person for his perspective. So anyway, I, you know, we only have two people that actually showed up.
Well, so we have for the
Well, after inviting a not quite a number, I mean, we interviewed quite a number of people to, to interview, but we, we did end up with only two that showed up.
Is there a motion for somebody or do we need to?
Sure, I, I will make a well, I guess, I, I mean, maybe, maybe it'd be good to hear if there's any additional discussion first.
No, I did learn from Sarah Lee Lawrence that there is not one day in Deshutes County that is not frost-free for the last hundred years. So no wonder I never have any tomatoes. There is not, yeah, one, not one day. So I thought that was fascinating.
She would know.
Besides our shortest year, you know, we have our shortest growing season. So it was great.
I, I guess
She was an excellent candidate, and I would definitely nominate her to be on it.
That's one of the seats.
I, I, one other thing I would mention is, you know, in the case that we, we loved all three of these candidates, there, there will be two more business representative seats to be filled on this committee. That would be filled not by us, but by the, the other five committee members. So that would be, that would be at one place to, to plug Brain Shadow Organics or, or Sarah Lee Lawrence in if you know, if we were really passionate about the two other candidates in this pool.
I, I really like Sarah Lee Lawrence, you know, being located where she is and the experience she has and the relationships. So I mean, there was good, good reasons to, to bring her upon. So, yeah, there was a motion. I'll second it if you don't.
It was that
It was a motion.
Okay, I'll second that.
Okay, yeah, so there we go. Move in a second for Sarah Lee Lawrence. Any other discussion? Commissioner Dare?
Yes.
Commissioner Chang?
Yes.
And Chair votes yes. There's one of the seats.
And I would move to appoint Donna Harris to the other Wolf Conservation or Coexistence with Wolves seat on the Wolf Depredation and Financial Assistance Committee.
Any thoughts, Commissioner? Are you supportive or?
As I was explaining to Christie, this is the coexistence of wolves. And you see, well, I've, I've seen what's happened with the elk population. I saw personally what happened in Eastern Oregon, where the wolves come in and the elk actually move, and they move where they haven't been. So I, I have a harder time with this because I've seen what happens in nature and, you know, it, it makes me a bit nervous.
Well, I, so I think
I know that's the point of this committee, but I'm just saying that, you know, I have a history of seeing the bull elk that have moved out of the Blue Mountains down to, next to the wheat fields in Morrel County, and it was really surprising. So I can't, I don't really want to second that motion. I, I might vote for it, but I don't want to second the motion.
Well, the, I mean, the you know, that, the, the changes in elk population and behavior are, are a significant consideration in terms of, in terms of what are the effects of wolves on the region, but this committee is about depredation of livestock. So I mean, I, I yeah, we need to be thinking about, about wolves and elk in the bigger picture, but it's, but elk are outside the scope of this committee.
Well, do you want me to tell cow stories then about my family's cows?
With that is
And they don't get pregnant because they are so nervous because, yeah, the wolves are there. And, you know, so hopefully, the fact that we have six packs now in the Cascade, I'm really happy we're forming this committee. Sure, I'll, I'll second Donna's nomination. But definitely, yeah, our numbers might not be going up, but the pack numbers are going up.
So it's a really interesting topic. And yeah, so if you weren't going to second it, I would. So it's been moved and seconded, as I was going to say, so her experience as a veterinarian and, and you know, very passionate in the domain of animals, really, you know, supports her nomination. So is there any other discussion? Seeing none, Commissioner Chang?
Yes.
Commissioner Dare? And Chair votes yes. So during the interviews, it was obvious, you know, we're, we're stepping into the unknown, because they said, well, how many times are we going to meet a year? How much money we can have? What's the big picture? We really don't know. You know, we do, we do know there's, there's pack activity north and south, edges of the county. There's, you know, there's all kinds of interest all around there. So it's just the great unknown about, you know, how active this committee will even be.
But I, I, you know, I, I, I think I mentioned this to almost every candidate who we interviewed. But I, I, you know, I, I, I think I mentioned this to almost every candidate um who we interviewed. How often this committee meets to process um. Depredation compensation claims. Really depends on whether there are any and how, how frequently that happens, but uh, this. Uh, committee has a real opportunity to take a proactive role in uh promoting prevention activities, depredation prevention activities. And uh, helping to bring federal and state money to our community to, to implement those activities. So hopefully we don't have any depredations. So um, I, I hope that. A decent chunk of the, the first year of activity of this committee is dedicated to that. And. Um, I, I think that would be a very uh proactive approach to the arrival of wolves in our community.
When there's other committees around the state, two other counties are doing this. So there'll be a, there'll be a cohort of people to be able to compare notes.
Yeah.
Great.
We did it.
We'll move forward with the four letters of appointments for the committee. The initial committee is actually made up of five members. The fifth one is one commissioner.
Now it's time for arm wrestling.
That we can either talk about that today or we can bring that back before the board. There will be some, you know, getting the logistics and the details and the meetings planning. So we have some time. But I'll leave it up to you. If you want to start that discussion today amongst the one commissioner, or if you want to come, if you only have come back and bring this up at another time.
Um. I mean, before we. Before we jump into the arm, you know. I, I, well, one of the things I would like to ask is. Uh, a, a number of the interviewees asked, well, how long am I? How long am I in for? Like, what am I signing, what am I signing up for in terms of a, a commitment? Um. And you know, on the, on the one hand, um. You, we want to make sure that people feel, you know, secure in their appointment so that, you know, they, they can um. You know. Invest the time necessary to be the best committee member they can. Uh, and on the other side, uh, it, it, it didn't occur to me until. The, the, you know, until that question came up a few times that there are people who, who might find a, you know. Like a four-year appointment kind of uh daunting. It's a long, it's a long time to, to commit your life.
Clarified that it would be a two-year appointment.
So that question did come up, I think, in all of our panel interviews. Um, it definitely came up with between. The candidates that Commissioner DeBona and I sat down with as well. Um, the draft chart, the charter has been drafted, but clearly not finalized. I drafted the charter based off of other county charters, including Wheeler County, Klamath County, Creek County. Um, and there's a variety of approaches there. The initial draft charter. Has the terms as four years with half of those being three years to rotate it. Um, but we, I think that there will be some consideration of making that a smaller term of a two-year term. Um, I did clarify before I came down here that the letter of appointment doesn't necessarily need to say that. Term in there. It can be, I believe, something we can discuss in that first meeting when we're finalizing the draft charter. We do expect um initially that the meetings may only be twice a year, potentially quarterly. Based upon um, if, if we have activity and depredation activity, um, we could call special meetings there. So. The time commitment may be longer, but for shorter amount of time throughout the year. So I think these are things that we can discuss in that charter, but I think we would be open to two or three-year terms as well. I, I don't believe there's a legal reason why we couldn't do that. Does that?
Really good though, in the, that letter to have it clarified how long the term is. Honestly, because I've had to go back to those letters for documentation when I have a question about something. And so perhaps maybe we shouldn't send them letters until we make that determination. We can pull it off by next week.
Sure, absolutely. I'll have some internal conversation.
A lot clearer and I like your idea. Two to three years. So we do have staggered.
Great. We'll take that into consideration and.
Or a letter that says. To be determined during the first meeting and finalizing the. You know, the, the charter.
Yeah, I mean, we, we, we interviewed them. We interviewed them with the, uh, under the assumption that it could be up to four years. So I mean. We could even just see. See what preferences are, right? Like, hey, we're, we're, we, we want to appoint you. Do you want a two or three, three-year term? Um, cause.
Should be the first meeting.
Yeah.
And, and then we could revise, I would be happy to revise the letter. Of a um. Of appointment to include what that term is determined.
How about a letter appointment acknowledging that, uh, you know. Terms haven't been finalized yet or. You know, some, some nice words about that.
Well, I just remember the facilities review committee. And for some reason I was told that they were done after a year and then I was told they were done after two years. But then when I went back to the original documentation in their letter, it said clearly how long that appointment was. So that's why I'm just going on past history. Like to have things laid out as cleanly as possible.
One suggestion, just to make a, maybe a blend between the two suggestions. Maybe make a determination as far as um, the staggered terms, if you want two or three years, how many positions you want for two years and three years? And then the committee members can sign up for which one, which term they want to. Sign up for based on their schedules. So you would have uh however many positions for two years and then however many positions for three years. Or whatever term you.
If our goal is, is not to have like a just vacuum at some point in time of institutional memory, it seems like maybe half and half.
Right. It would have to be happening.
Right, right.
Whoever signed up first could get whatever they wanted. And then the second person.
And then make the determination of what that. Um, duration.
Well, there's, yeah, two on two sides of this. So one for each one of the. Positions.
But, but again, you know, it's quite possible that people will be like. Two years is plenty. I mean, that's a, that's a long, it's a pretty long time to commit to something.
So we support a letter referring to the fact that it still needs to be determined, but it'll either be for two or three years. Uh, and it sounds like it's an easy split to be able to say, you know, for the two sides, uh, you know, one of each and however it gets signed up.
Great.
Be determined at the first meeting.
Perfect.
So the welcome letter went from this to a little bit more.
And then we'll, I'll come back before you at a later date in time to discuss the commissioner who will be filling that.
Uh, yeah, let's do that.
Okay. Great.
Thank you for. Running this process.
Happy to move forward with this.
Thank you. Yeah, get another one moving forward.
To see this committee. Up and running and they give our community access to those federal and state dollars.
Great.
And commissioners, we have two legislative matters to, to, and Jen has one of those as well. And Brittany, if you want to. Come up and we'll be prepared to discuss the next one back to back.
So before you, we have a revised draft for a letter requesting an amendment for SB eight four seven A. Uh, we briefly talked about this during Monday's board meeting. There was a couple of suggestions for changes. We have made those changes. I sent out a revised. Draft yesterday afternoon, and since that time we have a couple of more changes. Um, so I just wanted to highlight those, um, since you probably have not seen them yet. We added on the. Second paragraph at the end of the first sentence, we added for broader placement of transitional housing and similar temporary accommodations. So and similarly temporary accommodations is the new language that you have not seen yet. Um, and then. Going down a little bit further in the. Last, I think it's the last sentence, um. We took out at the perimeter of existing UGBs and swapped that out for outside of UGBs. And then just one typo at the, the very end, changing proximate to proximity.
Yeah, I like it.
And I, yeah, while we, I don't. Yeah, okay. Yeah, I, I don't think we need to necessarily give a number, you know, a mile or whatever. I, I, I do think it's really important to emphasize. Uh, that proximity to UGBs. Um, we, we are already. Uh, at least I'm already starting to get uh emails from people who are uh concerned about, you know. Uh, about allowing outdoor shelter, you know, outside of UGBs, you know, I'm 10 miles out of town and, you know, I don't want you. I don't want you while, you know, authorizing that near my house. Um, so just kind of being very. Um. Uh, you know, narrowly focused um and, and targeted and strategic that we are, you know, in, in my mind, we, we are seeking to enable. A, you know, a spec, a very specific project, um, right on the edge of the, the city events UGP that. Um. So I, I. Yeah, I guess this, this, this phrase that are in close proximity to UGBs, I think that, I think that works.
It's definitely another advocacy position and, and there's, it just leaves a, leaves a open, a lot of open discussion for the legislature, you know.
Yeah, but while, while still signaling that we're thinking just around the edge of the UGB, so we don't, we don't. Yep. Worry a lot of other people for a lot of other reasons.
So you actually have another. Um, update to this letter?
That would you just? No, no, I'm sorry. I, I just pointed out, this is the updated letter.
From the email is.
From the email that I sent yesterday afternoon. We had those two changes that I just pointed out, but that this letter includes incorporates those changes.
Right.
So is there a motion, letter of support or a letter of topic?
Uh, I move uh approval and signature, board signature of this. A letter to the Joint Ways and Means Committee requesting amendment to Senate Bill eight forty seven A.
And I'll second it.
Any other discussion? Seeing then Commissioner Chang.
Yes.
Commissioner Dare.
Yeah.
And chair votes, yes. Thank you so much.
Can circulate for signature later or if you.
Yep.
Sign it now.
Well, if you have a nice clean copy, I.
Those are clean copies in front of you. Yep.
Yep, okay, I got, I'll do this one then.
Well, they were clean.
I have another one.
That's a clean one. There we go.
Here we go, third signature. Looks like Whitney's ready for something too.
Yep, just one more follow-up legislative item. For the record, Whitney Hale, Deputy County Administrator. Um, Holly Harris, Behavioral Health Deputy Director received a request um from AOC MHP to testify in support of House Bill twenty seven fifty seven. Currently, um, the board's position on this bill is a watch two. You may recall in our initial. Uh, review of bills that this was a bill that you had conflicting recommendations on priority and position from Behavioral Health and Deschutes County nine one one. This is the bill that would expand funding for coordinated crisis service systems, including nine eight eight. And it would add um an additional tax on phone lines, which is also a source of revenue for PSAPS across the state. And so there's some concern from. Um, PSAPS that this would, um, it could potentially impact future funding that they're able to obtain. And as. Director Sarah Crosswhite explained, um, it's not quite as much of a, a priority concern for. Us here in Deschutes County, but she's sensitive to the impact it could have for other more rural um. Public safety answering points. And so in typically, um, we would not have staff testify um. With a position that's contrary to the position that's been taken by the board, but we just wanted to make sure that you were aware of the request and see if. You'd like to maintain that past practice or modify it in this situation.
One, and maybe revisit our position as well to. See if we are contrary.
Correct. If certainly if the board would like to amend its prior position on this bill, um, that's great. The hearing is tomorrow, and so that's the reason that I was bringing it forward to you today. Um, Holly indicated that. Um, AOC MHP is able to find other, would, would look for another person to provide testimony in support of the bill, but she's just looking to give them. Uh, a response on their request as soon as possible, given the timing of tomorrow's hearing.
And, and providing, providing them with the rock star of crisis services for the state as a. As a testifier is, you know. Probably would help their, their, help their case.
So uh, this is about the tax, a, a new dollar tax or whatever the number is uh for not. For phone lines.
Correct.
And what was the issue that? For nine one one, I guess is what I, I was trying to follow here.
I think it's essentially, that can be a way that um nine one one. Um, groups around the state have revenue that comes into them. And if you start layering on additional taxes in that same.
Okay, yeah. So the purpose is different than the, the, the functional primary purpose. Which is, that would be the concern. Okay.
Correct. But as the board knows, for us locally, um. That's, we're in a different funding situation than, than other nine one one organizations across, than some of our organizations across the state. So Sarah acknowledged that. It's more a broader concern um for the statewide rather than a local concern.
And you, you were pointing out two different things. So the policy of. Somebody being able to. Testify, even though we kind of have different opinions internally or as an organization.
I think our past practice is typically that staff's testimony aligns with the board's priorities and positions. Um, and so that we're happy to maintain that past practice. Or we could um modify it and, and Holly could provide testimony specifically related to. Behavioral health and crisis services for this bill.
Well, and I support, you know, basically talking through these, because it doesn't happen all the time and sometimes they could be more. Effective more than others. So I'm just, it's okay that we're talking about it is what I'm saying. Any thoughts, Commissioner?
Um, I just don't want to add a tax at this time. So.
Hmm.
Just another tax. They all add up.
Yeah, see, and I support that position also. Uh. It's, it's, you know, one point is a revenue source. On the other hand, it's a, uh, you know, not the intention of an original line. Or it's expanding the intention. So I mean, I'm kind of in the same spot also. Um, so then that puts Holly in a position of. Yeah, if we're not aligned.
I mean, well, one, one way I, I, I would like us to think about this is uh. If these, if this is creating a, a fund source that could fund, uh, that could support the stabilization center and crisis services. Um. We continue to, to. You know, our, our, our funding approach um to the stabilization center continues to be. It's like cross your fingers that the, there's going to be some state money that falls from the sky to keep that running. Uh, because we're, you know, we're, we're making a modest. General fund investment in the, in the stabilization center and crisis services, but. Um. Uh, and nowhere near what we would have to uh invest if. Uh, nowhere near what we'd have to invest if there was no state money available. So uh. The, the, you know, I, I think the risk, uh, the, the risk to Deschutes County is that if without. Programs such as this, um. We need to figure out in the future how to keep the stabilization center running um. Out of our general fund.
Uh, so yeah, uh, I. I like where we're at. No position. We're in that spot with Holly. So yeah, I mean.
That's helpful. I'll coordinate.
Go with it. Yeah.
And um, as you acknowledge, these come up rarely, but we like to flag them when they do. So.
No, it's good, good communication.
Thank you.
Thank you. Hey, anything else from that? So my thought is we'll go through other items a little bit here and then uh take a break to switch to executive session. One of our opportunities might be to take a break till one o'clock and come back. There's a, just a little queue of items that are coming up. So just an idea that we'll see if we want to get to. Uh, other items.
Okay, so we were.
What have you been up to the last few days?
We were all at the Bethlehem.
Yep.
It was an excellent turnout. We have a twenty-four year history. Shits County was at the start and. We're still right there. So really appreciate that they are a high barrier program. They work someone for five weeks. And hopefully they can uh make serious progress or they may have to leave. They don't, but they're welcome back in thirty days. So um, you know, thank you, Gwen Wisely. For, for leadership with that program.
Yeah, and all three of us were there last night.
It was great.
Well, and I agree. It was a great room full of people, a lot of support for the Bethlehem Inn and uh it was good to see everybody and thanks for the Bethlehem Inn. Uh, uh, you know, just the whole effort, the board and their staff and, and the history of that, that operation.
I'll mention that uh on Friday, uh, two meetings from Friday, one. Um, the Deschutes Basin Water Collaborative Working Group met uh on Friday and. Uh, had extensive discussion and presentations around uh both the. The idea of moving north. the idea of moving North Unit Irrigation District's diversion, um, and, and pump station from the Crooked River to Lake Billy Chinook. Uh, and also a, a lot of discussion about, uh, on farm efficiency and lateral canal piping projects, uh, and how to promote those. Um, that was the water collaborative and then the MPO, uh, Policy Board met also on, on Friday and, uh, one, uh, item note from that meeting was that the MPO Board, Policy Board, uh, has a, a pot of COVID relief funding that, uh, they're kind of, um, distributing out to various projects. And one of the, one of the allocations that was made, uh, on Friday was to give about $500,000 to, um, to the, the Housing Works Core Community Land Trust Simpson Project, essentially to do some major, um, sidewalk bike pathway, um, investments along Simpson to, that will, uh, meet some of the obligations that that affordable housing project has, you know, to the city, but also, um, will really help to, uh, essentially establish a Simpson as the north gateway access point to the, to the OSU Cascades campus as it builds out. But definitely the, those dollars came through, uh, in a, in a pinch moment for, um, for the core and housing works projects. And, um, it sounds like with the, with the award of these dollars, they're going to get, be able to move to construction very, very soon.
Great. So, uh, special note, uh, my dad's birthday. So happy birthday, Bob DeBona out there. So he's, uh, eighty-one. Uh, it's a, it was Monday, so I didn't think about it on Monday. Uh, was able to attend the scout lunch, uh, was that yesterday? Uh, boys, uh, scout lunch. Uh, so that was just a promotion for that event. Uh, we all attended Bethlehem Inn, uh, spotlighting homelessness. Uh, yesterday also was coffee with the commissioner in Redmond for myself. Uh, so this is an opportunity for you to, I compare notes on this. Uh, I'm not having a lot of people like get up and jump and run in to say hi to me from our postings at the county. I've, you know, a few people have showed up each time and I've known people in the, in the coffee shop. So, I mean, it's always a good time to be out there, but uh, I just kind of compare notes. Have you found it valuable and you want to proceed or, you know, and I, I haven't been to Sisters yet. I've been to Levine, Bend and Redmond now.
When I, uh, I mean, the, you know, my, my three data points are, uh, when I was in Redmond, had about fifteen to twenty people come. Uh, when I was in Sisters, had about thirty people come. And then, uh, this last, you know, couple of weeks ago in Bend, six. Um, yeah, but I, I, they, they, they were very valuable discussions and, and it was a pretty quiet coffee shop. So there wouldn't have been just kind of people walking in and we're like, oh, there's my commissioner. I should go talk to them. So, um, uh, I've been.
Yeah. Do you want to keep doing it? Or is there a vision about where you want to go with it or?
Oh, I would absolutely, uh, like to keep doing this. Um, and the, the, one of the reasons I think that the turnout was a little lower for, uh, this bend, um, coffee, uh, than the, the prior two was that, uh, the social media that, that, uh, the county put out, uh, was a little later than it was the, the prior two times. And then, you know, I, yeah, as a result of that, the, the resharing of the social media that I put out was also a little bit later. So it was kind of very compressed timeline up to, um, up to that coffee itself. So I, you know, the only, I would, I would list that as the main reason, in my opinion, that I only had six people in, in Bend this last couple.
Well, I mean, I'm in an interesting spot. I kind of wanted to see what, you know, just a simple county posting would do. And I'm not spending a lot of time trying to promote or re-promote. Uh, and I didn't promote very specifically for Ben and Redman, wanting to see who else would show up, you know, cause I could get specific people to show up, but that's not my intention. I want other people to show up. So just, just letting you know.
I, I mean, I have, there, there's, there's, you know, I have, you know,
Yeah. So, yeah.
You know, there, you know, people who are tracking on between my commissioner and my commissioner Facebook page and the, um, Instagram page, I got, I, you know, it's, it's thousands of people, thousands of Deschutes County residents. So, um, honestly, I think it's, I think it's a reflection. I think it's a reflection that of the reach of, it, it's a reflection of the reach of the county social media. Like if you are relying on that as the only way to get the word out, um, that there's not that many people who, um, are tracking it.
Oh, I, as I say, I'm just kind of acknowledging, cause as I say, I know I could promote it. I mean, I did it all last year and we were filling rooms. So, I mean, it's just, I'm trying to switch modes here as.
Yeah. No, I, I, I have a, I have a separate page. I have, I have separate, I have separate pages for, or separate profiles for campaign activity. This is not, I'm not thinking of this as campaign activity. I'm thinking of this as a basic.
Yeah. And it's, yeah, there's no, no conflict here. I was just comparing those with you. No. Yeah. And, uh, would you like to participate, Commissioner?
No.
That was fine. Just, just checking in. So looks like we'll proceed. And as I say, I haven't been to Sister officially on this tour, but.
I'll just acknowledge that, um, Eric, Brianne and Jen Patterson are coordinating on some, um, kind of strategies that we haven't used yet, including, uh, posting on the next door. That's geographically specific to the, um, community where the coffee will be occurring. And that's really a large reach, uh, option for us that we haven't employed to date. So I'll be interested to see with that addition, um, if there's a change or, or there may not be, but just know that staff's discussing that and looking for ways to make sure that word gets out there, um, to the broadest extent we can share it.
You could have sandwich boards made and you could go on a store.
There are many options.
But yeah, theoretically, we, we could, we could, we could probably, we could put a little advertisement in the newspaper. Uh, but I, I mean.
I'm just checking in.
Yeah. There's, there's a cost to all of it.
Yeah. And I don't want a lot of overhead here. I've just, yeah, it's good to get out. Uh, and then, uh, yeah, I guess that was it for all my notes. So that's it for other, or do you have other items? Sorry. Did you already do your thing? Yeah. I think we're all set here. So at this time, we do have executive sessions. Uh, one of the thoughts is to, how about, uh, we reconvene upstairs? And as I say, I think a couple of these items that might go pass, I don't know that we might take a lunch break and come back at one o'clock is, is what I was thinking, just because there's a bunch of them. But let's reconvene upstairs for executive sessions today and see where it goes. So with that, we'll recess.
So we'll walk upstairs.
Are we going there right now?
Yes.
Yeah, in five minutes.